Any word from Jim? All right. Oh, good. All right. Good afternoon. This open meeting of the Board of Appeals is being conducted hybrid pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. The board is meeting in person and by Zoom as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. And all supporting materials that have been provided, members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. Okay. So this is the Town in Nantucket Zoning Board of Appeals, special meeting Friday, January 24, 2025. Calling the meeting to order at 1:04 PM. Could I get a motion to approve the agenda as drafted?
So moved.
Second. We'll do roll call vote because we do have John Brusher on Zoom. So when I call your name, if you're in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye. Alisa Allen?
Aye.
Lisa Botticelli?
Aye.
Jim Mondani?
Aye.
John Brusher?
Aye.
Okay. We're going to move to the only matter of business on the agenda, application 2524, sorry, 2524, Surfside Crossing LLC, Surfside Crossing 40B, represented by attorney Paul Haverty. We're continuing the discussion from last week. Is it last week, the last meeting? Is Mr. Durensis on Zoom?
Yes, he's on Zoom. I'm promoting him right now.
Okay. So the next talking point that we have is the response by Brooks and Durensis representing Nantucket Tipping Point. And then we hope to move to the Board Architectural Review. We'll have a public comment period, and then we'll talk about potential meeting dates and topics for future meetings.
Mr. Durensis is on.
Okay. Mr. Durensis, you have the floor.
Great. Good afternoon. Thank you for giving us this time. We would like to call as our first witness, first presenter, Beau Barber.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Thank you very much. My name is Beau Barber, and I live at 7 Kelly Road. I'm a former member of the Nantucket Fire Department, where I served 13 years. I attended the Massachusetts Fire Academy, and I'm well-versed in hydraulics, and arrived on the first due engine at the Veranda House fire, and was tasked with managing Engine 1 and Ladder 1 pumps. I agree with my former chiefs Bates and Murphy, who wrote in a May 13, 2019 letter to the ZBA. This development places an overwhelming responsibility on the fire department if an emergency were to arise. I disagree with Chief Cranston and the project's engineers. The Nantucket has adequate water pressure or quantity for even moderate firefighting activities. I cannot speak for the calculations made by the engineers, but I can report what was clear to me in a live-fire scenario at the Veranda House. If they want to stake their professional reputations on their findings, they can. At the Veranda House fire, from 7:00 AM to roughly 4:00 PM, the Nantucket Fire Department used 850,000 gallons of the 4 million gallon capacity in the town's two water towers. The department had three apparatus of its six, Engine 1, Engine 7, and Ladder 1, each with an ideal pump capacity of over 1,000 gallons per minute under the best circumstances. With three hydrants, we had roughly 15,000 square feet of fire load to cover. For nine hours, the department pumped at peak roughly 2,000 gallons per minute on average, with each engine running at or near minimum intake pressure allowance of 20 PSI. This meant we could not exceed 2,000 gallons per minute of water flow, and the available pressure was at its limit. As I recall, and this should be verified, four to five hang lines, two ground attack monitors, and one ladder pipe were used at the scene. Any more firefighting activity would mean significant pressure loss across the fire ground. According to Mass DEP, the water company's current capacity is 3,900 gallons per minute with two wells out of service. On the summer's busiest day, peak seasonal usage can reach 3,300 gallons per minute. If the fire at the Veranda House and two nearby buildings, adding up to 15,000 square feet of fire load, used a quarter of the town's water supply over nine hours, and nearly all of the town's available pressure was consumed to friction loss in the system, I hope it's clear to you that we have a significant problem. The fire at the Veranda House was the limit, I'll say that again, the limit of our capabilities. The Nantucket Fire Department has added three more firefighters per shift in the last two years, bringing the total shift number to nine. The day-to-day needs for personnel have been met. Augmenting service with call volunteer or mutual aid remains a challenge, and the risk is ever-present. However, the most pressing concern is the water infrastructure itself. The town is woefully underestimated in its water infrastructure. A hypothetical fire any larger than the Veranda House, combined with wind, would quickly overwhelm our current water resources and leave our personnel resources completely ineffective. If we have learned anything from the fires at LA, it's that without water, you can't fight a fire. The town needs more towers and more wells. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
We would like to call as our second witness, Megan Perry.
Okay. She's on Zoom, yes?
Yeah, she's coming up. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Okay. Thank you so much. This is Megan Perry. I had sent in a letter for the packet for last meeting, and I know ZBA members are all very busy. You have jobs, you have families, you have lives, so sometimes it gets lost. I just wanted to very quickly run through that to bring it to your attention. I was writing to you guys based on information that's been provided in the past. In 2018 and 2019, Nantucket Tipping Point had Dr. John Kuhn come in and present, and he had brought to the board's attention the concern over PFAS, the quality of water, our sole source aquifer, and the harmful effects of overdevelopment on the island's finite resources. Some people kind of brushed him off, said he was maybe premature or kind of a crazy greenie, and he replied with, you know, "You can call me now and listen to me, or you can call me in 10 years when you realize you have a problem." And I think what we can all see now is that we do have a problem. If anybody was able to look at the transcript I provided from the Capcom meeting, August 29 of 2024, it's very clear that we have a PFAS issue. The Water Director states this. He's asking, potentially asking for filtration systems to go in, and filtration systems aren't going to just solve the problem. It kind of kicks the can down the road a little bit. But I'd like to pull a couple quotes from that meeting for you guys, just so you're kind of caught up to speed, because I'm sure not everybody's watching all of those meetings. And do keep in mind that the maximum contamination level by the state is 20 parts per trillion. That's not parts per billion, which is what most chemicals are measured in, but PFAS is so harmful, it's measured in parts per trillion. Even the tenuous drop can cause major contamination. So one of the things the Water Director said is that we do sample for above and beyond because like when a contaminated thing like Tom's Way, that's right across the street from my well, and I'm so nervous that I almost threw it in for 2026, but I didn't. Don't be surprised if in 2027, if I have a huge capital request for some type of treatment plant here, it's, he continues on, "It's 600 feet away from our pumping wells." That's very close. And the board asked him for kind of a ballpark on pricing, and it's, he says, "I mean, you're talking over $20 million, and I need one in each well. So if I got it across the street here on Tom's Well, I have three wells behind my office, and you're looking at $50 to $60 million in treatment if it gets here." Continuing on, he says, "Maybe, maybe. I've turned off wells, so I wouldn't pull it in." So we're running kind of lean on the systems, and we're putting a lot of stress on the system that I don't know if any of you have noticed, or if you're on town water, there might have been a few instances during the week, throughout the summer, each week, where the water pressure wasn't that great because I've been turning off the wells because I don't want to pull that stuff across the street. I don't want to pull it over to the wells. So I have the well closest to Tom's Way is off, and I haven't run it all summer. I'm not worried about pulling it across the street. So what he's talking about is the PFAS plume that's in the upper aquifer. And my concern for this is every time you put in a new customer, so a new well, a new request for water, you are increasing the pull on the aquifer, and you're bringing that plume, that contamination, closer to the municipal well. So every, I believe he said about 200 customers per year, you're increasing the potential for fully contaminating our aquifer and municipal water. High-density development creates a larger demand on that. So it's not just one household. It's 156 demanding water, increasing the pull of the plume closer to the entire community's water. Contamination of drinking water and the decrease in available water pressure are two of my many concerns. And the Water Director mentions both of these publicly at the meeting. So like Mr. Barber just stated, the water pressure is an issue, and then we're also trying to decide, do we have enough water pressure to put out a fire and flip on those wells that are contaminated? And well 15, which is currently off, is contaminated at 55 parts per trillion. Again, the state level is 20 parts per trillion. So do we flip that well on and have pressure that is maybe adequate enough to put out 19 Veranda House-sized buildings on 13 acres at Surfside Crossing? Not sure we could be able to do that. Do we leave our firefighters and first responders without pressure? Do we continue to contaminate our municipal drinking and private wells? What do we do if we can't drink the water? What do we do if we can't bathe in the water? The first responders did an amazing job at the Veranda House and kind of were able to put that out by the skin of their teeth. And I don't mean that in an insulting way. They used every bit of ingenuity that they possibly could to save the community. And I think putting up 19 Veranda House buildings in one dense location is putting all of us at risk. Coming before this board and asking for waivers and exemptions to rules, bylaws, regulations, that would all place our community at risk is not okay. You can't put economic profit ahead of the community's well-being. And not resolving these risks for the sake of economics and profit in the name of affordable housing is what this project is all about. So I can't stress enough to this board to deny the project for the health, safety, and welfare of our entire community. It's up to you guys to make this call, and you have the ability to deny the project. I will say, I personally was a little bit frustrated to hear that this was, the Veranda House fire was a good test of our system. I don't think it was a good test. I think we just heard it wasn't a good test, and I think we had a lot of first responders and community members who were put at risk. And it's a little bit insulting to say that it was a good test. We don't need to test the system. We don't need to test our luck every time. So I would like to just stress, we don't have the resources for this project. It will compromise the health, safety, welfare of our community. PFAS is here. We need to limit water contamination. If we don't have drinking water, it doesn't matter where the trash bins are located, how many affordable units, what kind of curb cut, any of those things. It doesn't matter if you can't drink the water and you don't have pressure to put out fires. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan.
So may I follow up on some of these comments that have been made?
Sure.
First comment is that everything that Nantucket has been using as a standard is this 20 parts per trillion. However, the science indicates that 20 parts per trillion is not safe, and the EPA is in the process of reducing that standard to .04, which is much lower. And while it's good to work towards the 20 standard, that's only temporary. We need to look at getting to four and beyond, four to zero. These PFAS chemicals are not safe. Second point to follow up on the Veranda House fire, 850,000 gallons. At Surfside Crossing, there are 19 Veranda-style sized houses. If those 19 houses, those buildings caught on fire, starting in one building, spreading to the others, you would need not 850,000, but 19 times 815,000, or 16 million gallons. And Nantucket doesn't have that kind of water. The designs have these buildings too close together. The history of the Veranda Fire had the fire spread from the Veranda House to adjoining buildings. Next, I want to address an issue that is constantly being raised by the developer here, which is that you can't consider any issue at all practically because it wasn't in a Housing Appeals Committee remand order. And what I want to draw the board's attention to is that there's actually two different things going on in this hearing. There was a project before the Housing Appeals Committee, and that project has been remanded to this board, but that project has been modified. And there's a whole series of modifications that have been made. Those modifications have been hidden, have been done silently. There was no notice of project change, and so on. But there's a whole category, whole series of categories of changes made in the project for which the limitations in the remand order has no application. The most important of which, you've heard testimony how the stormwater designs are inadequate. This was presented by the Nantucket Water and Land Council. The response was, well, that's outside the scope of the remand order. But the project the developer presented to the Housing Appeals Committee, which was remanded to you, is based on the representation that the site would have only minimal vegetation disturbance. And they have the audacity to file that document in the packet for this meeting. And if you turn to the DEP portion of it, you'll see the box checked off, minimal vegetation disturbance. We asked for a site visit so you could go and see. That is not the project before you. The site has been clear-cut of vegetation, and you've heard from the Land Council experts that vegetation is a key factor in protecting the quality of water. So the argument that this is not before you is completely false. The clearcutting was done by the developer. They know they did the clearcutting, and therefore they know that stormwater, instead of falling on vegetation, is falling basically on a desert of sand because that's what they left behind. Stormwater is very much before you and very much part of your jurisdiction. Also want to bring to your attention the other changes. The project at the Housing Appeals Committee included an easement for a walkway for pedestrians to access Surfside Road where there is bus transportation. Now, an easement is a property interest. It's not the town road, the town building something in its roadway. It's an easement from the developer. That has been erased from the plan. The efforts of the developer to characterize the easement as being a town of Nantucket responsibility to be done on town-owned land at the taxpayer's expense, if the town feels such a pedestrian walkway is desirable, is a completely false narrative. The reason why the elimination of the walkway is significant is that the experts that they cite, their traffic analysis, favorably mentions that walkway and goes further and says that the project should be encouraging pedestrians, not dumping them on a road. Pedestrians, children, people on bicycles, the impact of that project revision requires traffic analysis. People are going to be using their cars more when they can't walk safely, or they can't send their children safely to get on a bus. So the argument that traffic is not an issue is a false narrative because they chose to modify the project. This project, without that walkway, was never the, it was not the project that was remanded to you. It's a different project. Another change that they've made silently is usurpation of town's property rights. The town has an easement that runs through this property where the town locates sewer mains. At the Housing Appeals Committee, there was no use being made of the town's easement. The project before you, they admit, includes installation of utilities, fencing, a building on the town's easement, potentially blocking the town's physical access to its sewer mains in the event of an emergency. Again, this is a different project than what was remanded to you. The project at the Housing Appeals Committee did not provide for onsite electricity generation. Now we're hearing the project that's before you is proposing electrical generators onsite, burdening the neighbors with noise and air pollution. Again, not the project that was remanded to you, not the project that's subject to the remand order. This is a modified project. The project at the Housing Appeals Committee did not have streetlights. The project now before you is going to be lit up with streetlights. This has an immediate adverse impact on the neighbors. Changing the project from a dark project to a lit-up project, that's not what was remanded to you. The remand order can't limit you from considering project changes. The project at the Housing Appeals Committee did not have its own well. The project at the Housing Appeals Committee was relying entirely on town water. Yet the project they are now talking about is modified. It has a well taking water from the sole source aquifer upstream of the neighbor's wells. There's no studies done on the impact on the downstream wells. No, none of the normal paperwork associated with these changes has been done because they're all, all these changes are being snuck in silently, without a notice of project change. We have to discover it from looking at plants. So let me, let me go to the issue of why this project should be denied. There's a failure to comply with stormwater standards. The developers' failure to comply with the stormwater standards 5 and 6 creates a threat to the neighbors and to the town and to the town's drinking water aquifer for reasons presented by the Nantucket Land and Water Council experts. Developer's defense is that others have been allowed to build without compliance. And therefore, we should be allowed to build without compliance. They cite 10 projects. We have analyzed those 10 projects. None of them compare to Surfside Crossing. Surfside Crossing is bigger. The projects that are being cited are commercial. There's things like the Frito Lay Distribution Center. There are two smaller housing developments, but nothing like the size, the density, and quantum of human occupancy of the Surfside Crossing development. It is completely a red herring. But in any event, we now know, in part from the PFAS that we've been talking about and in part from science developing more information, that these standards really need to be complied with. And to the extent that Nantucket has been less than careful in the past is a compelling argument that it's about time that Nantucket does the right thing. There's been enough abuse of the aquifer. Let's not repeat that mistake. For all those reasons, the project should be denied. Then let's talk about the lack of fire safety. There is a statement in the Heaverty Letter, top of page two, that says, quote, "The testimony submitted by Mr. Souza," who's their expert, their fire expert. "The testimony submitted by Mr. Souza covers all the fire access concerns previously raised." This is not a true statement. Let me give you some examples. Souza said under oath, and it's in the papers, given to you by the Developers Council, quote, "The applicant also proposes a reinforced turf emergency access roadway in the subdivision from South Shore Road. Because the roadway has a width of 15 feet, where the code minimum requirement is 20 feet, it was not considered as a fire department access road." In simpler words, the evidence submitted by the developer itself is that the emergency access road is too narrow, doesn't meet code, and is to be disregarded. There's a lack of adequate firefighter access. We submitted into the record during the Housing Appeals Committee proceedings, extensive testimony made by, at the time, the Nantucket Fire Chief, under oath that the Nantucket Fire Department lacked the means to fight a fire at the site and needed access for its equipment. Souza's answer, also under oath, is that because there is no legal mandate for the access needed by the Nantucket Fire Department, the question was not analyzed. The response letter from the developer's lawyer says, "We're going to stand on that testimony and will not submit any additional evidence." And the issue is settled. The fire access remains unsafe. Not analyzed and not to code. Unfortunately for the developer, the Board of Appeals' responsibility here is to consider local concerns and local needs, which means to require a safe project, not a death trap. Another reason to deny the project is the lack of adequate water supply to fight fires at the project site. We've submitted the transcript of the remarks of the water superintendent. Megan Perry has read you some of those excerpts. There are more. But we submitted the whole transcript. He acknowledges that the PFAS pollution plume is approaching the town's well field. So he is limiting pumping from some of the wells, drinking water, from some of the town's drinking water wells. This means that while there is technically on paper capacity to handle a fire at the proposed development, in doing so, pumping will pull the PFAS contamination plume towards the town wells at the risk of possible contamination for the island's sole source aquifer, affecting every citizen of this town who's on water. I don't want to revisit all of the details of that testimony. The transcript is there. I'd ask you to consider that carefully. Putting a large project at this site with the risk that it will have to pull significant amount of water creates an unreasonable risk for the entire community. I also want to draw your attention to the fact that the requirements that the town has for setbacks of developers' stormwater facilities and leaching fields have not been complied with. Developers' plans violate the Board of Health requirements for setbacks, which work to keep developers' pollution-causing facilities away from a butter's drinking water. Our witnesses who presented this information to the Board of Appeals, where Chris Meredith and Jack Samicki provided maps that included a maps, a map of the wells in existence in 1992. This response letter from the attorney for the developer says, quote, "The wells in question were installed in 2023 and were not in place with the stormwater when the stormwater was designed and submitted." This is completely wrong. You have the map from 1992. There is one well which was installed in 2023 before any construction took place. But the statement is not true with regard to the other wells long in operation. The developer's response letter makes clear that the development has not been revised to comply with the setback requirements. So as it is presented to you in the remand order, it violates basic public health safety. This is a serious harm to the public health. Also want to remind you that there's a failure to comply with the Nantucket Historic Districts Act. So we know, I think the next item on the agenda is the discussion of architecture. But I want to remind you of the testimony, under oath, of Diane Coombs at the Housing Appeals Committee that the project is inconsistent with the Historic District Act and must be completely reconfigured. The Select Board report includes similar HDC comments. The buildings are not consistent with that act. And that act is for everybody's benefit. It's part of our attraction to tourism. It's part of our obligation to history. We can't disregard the need for compliance. And finally, I want to point out to you that the testimony so far is that the town wants one solution to the issue of handling sewer from this project while the developer has not agreed to the town's position. There's still no sewer solution. For any one of the foregoing reasons or cumulatively all or some combination of the above reasons, we ask that the project before you be denied. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Drenses. So my thought was that we would do the architectural review. Lisa, how much time do you think you need? You don't think it will. Okay, so I-
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
We have a hand raised. It's Ryan Maxwell, who I believe is probably here in place of Don Bracken.
Yes. So I was going to suggest that why, why don't we, could we, if the board's in agreement, push the architectural review? I was going to say three o'clock, right? And we can spend the next hour with public comment. I'd like to see if Attorney Heaverty has anything to respond. And I'd like to hear from Pucci. And of course, the person whose hand is up. Does that make sense to everyone? Yeah, okay. So why don't we go with Mr., was it Maxwell you said had his hand up?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Can you just identify the company that you're from?
Yep, it's Ryan Maxwell with Bracken Engineering. I'm just stepping in for Don today because he's not available. So it's, it's been sort of hashed out already. But it's been brought up again that we don't comply with the stormwater standards. So, you know, from our perspective, we do. And I think if you look at Mr. Chesia's review, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but he seems to indicate that we would comply. So, you know, at the end of the day, this might just be a difference of opinion. But we've, you know, I guess in our, our opinion, we've laid out the reasons why, you know, we comply with the stormwater standards. So.
Yes. I'm sorry, I missed that, Ryan. Did you just interpret Mr. Chesia's comments as saying that he doesn't think you're, or he thinks you're in compliance? Is that what you just said? That was your interpretation of Mr. Chesia's opinion?
Yeah, as it relates to the stormwater standards, yes.
I disagree.
I mean, I don't want to put words in his mouth.
Then don't.
I don't want to speak for him.
Yep, don't. I wouldn't do that. Go ahead. Sorry. I just had to clarify that. Go ahead.
So if I may, Madam Chair.
Sure.
In his response letter, he has not indicated any issues that still need to be addressed.
I have nothing else to say. I just wanted to comment on that.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Mr. Chesia is on the-
Okay. Let's, let's have Mr. Chesia address that because I did have a question for him about that.
Okay, so, excuse me. As far as the stormwater, the DEP stormwater standards subjects to relocating systems that are in proximate to the private water supply wells. There was a well plan that shows some potential relocation. I think there was one that was disputed because of the date of the well installation, which is not necessarily resolved. So I think there is an issue there for the stormwater. But other than that, so I will talk about the two standards. I think there's, you know, some discussion from the Nantucket Land and Water Council as far as what's required. I'm not talking about water supply treatment. I'm talking about stormwater specifically. And subject to the well relocation, I mean, the system is relocated outside of the wells. My understanding is that the, it would be a LUPL. And what is required for a LUPL is a certain amount of pre-treatment prior to an infiltration system. And with the two devices, they have a catch basin plus the oil grid separator. That would give you 44% pre-treatment. Both of those are listed as allowable for both a LUPL and a critical area. Obviously, you heard from Mr. Riordan and he thinks that the treatment is a different system than those. My understanding of the regulations, which were written, I believe, back in 2008. And prior to that, I think it was 1996 when it was the policy. So I don't believe the stormwater regulations discuss or even in, considered things like PFAS and whatever. They, I don't think they were even on the radar for the stormwater. I just want to make that clear. But based on the stormwater regulations for what I see as allowed in a LUPL or a critical area, they have the pre-treatment. And then they have infiltration. And the, and the target of most of these Zone 2 things when they were first coming out is you can't take the water out of the watershed. They didn't really address the contamination other than the sediments. So that's, that's my understanding. And I'm happy to elaborate more if you don't, if there's a question on that.
You actually answered my question. I had, mine was about the LUPL. So you answered that in your response. Does anyone else have any questions for Chesia? Jim? Or Maxwell, or Mr. Maxwell, I guess?
This is for Mr. Chesia. In your latest document, you mentioned lid techniques. Is that the same as LUPL?
No, lid is low-impact development. So what, what the state has sort of done is they like people to consider low-impact development techniques, which include things such as you have swales next to a road instead of a catch basin to pipe, to system, they like to sort of diffuse it, recharge water, you know, throughout a site and use these sort of, what they call this low-impact- you know, throughout a site, and use these sort of, what they call this low-impact, although the reason that they're not used on a site like this is they take up space. They're not considered a super expensive type of thing. You have a swale instead of a pipe, it should be cheaper, but it takes up a lot of space. They have, you know, essentially a ditch next to the side of a road, the water would flow off into the ditch and then go to wherever. That's a low-impact development technique. Rain gardens, things of that nature are low-impact development techniques. But they take up space. And from my experience with, say, rain gardens, for example, and I've seen many put in people's, you know, in developments with, you know, subdivisions or things like that, they get rain gardens, and then the people buy the lot, and they don't like the look of it, and they fill it in. Or, you know, it's hard to, it's hard to manage because it's a little different in a condo, but in like a single-family housing development, it's, you know, owned and taken care of by that homeowner, and if they don't like it, and they don't know what it's about, they might just change it anyway. But so the state requires that you consider low-income, I mean, low, sorry, low, low-impact development measures, but there is no specific requirement to employ them on the project. If you do employ them on the project, you can get some credits for recharge and things like that. So that's sort of what that's about. I don't know if that helps you out?
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Okay. If there, I see Mr. Durensis has his hand up. Is there anyone else in the audience who wanted to speak before I go back to Mr. Durensis? Mr. Haverty?
Madam Chair, I can wait for Mr. Durensis to provide his additional comments before I respond.
Okay.
Probably more efficient that way.
Okay. Who's, are you letting people in? Megan Perry has her hand raised. Okay, I don't, I don't see her, I just see Durensis. You want to go to Durensis first, and then we'll go to Haverty, and then we can go back Mr. Durensis, you're still muted.
Hi, it's actually Linda Durensis who would like to speak. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can, thank you.
Great. I know you've all been watching the fires in California, and if it can happen there, it can happen here. I'd like to read a cease and desist order from the Nantucket Fire Department directed at Surfside Crossing dated 8/10/23. Unpermitted refueling transfer tank use. I'll submit this into the record so that you'll have it in the record. It has been brought to the attention of the fire prevention officers of the Nantucket Fire Department that unpermitted fueling and fuel storage has been taken place at Surfside Crossing site. This is written notification to cease all fueling operations at the site until the proper permitting and required inspections have taken place. Further fueling at this site will result in fines of $100, $500, and $1,000 respectively. Supporting documentation of all these Massachusetts Fire Code violations can be found in Chapter 42 of 527 CMR 1 and NSPA 1, Chapter 42. Required permit applications are available on the Town of Nantucket website. Respectfully, Joseph Townsend, Fire Prevention Officer, Nantucket Fire Department. The unsafe and unpermitted fueling and fuel storage was done by the developers in their subs. These are professional developers, and they are well aware of fire safety, the fire safety laws, the permits they needed, that they blatantly ignored. If you remember that summer, the rest of the state was getting a lot of rain, but not in Nantucket. So we had illegal fueling and fuel storage surrounded by pitch pine, which would have been a disaster. A line that has been brought up to you as a board saying you could always add that to a condition for the project. If these developers blatantly disregard the law, do you honestly think they're going to pay attention to any of your conditions? They're not. Also, who's going to enforce all those conditions? It was Nantucket Tipping Point who brought this unsafe conditions up for the cease and desist because it was so concerning to the neighbors. The developers have told you they are going to hack. They said that at the very first meeting. If you did not approve exactly what they already have at their own risk and their own, they chose to do it, they put in. So we know they're going to hack. They want you to approve some sort of project. What, I hope you understand, if you approve any, anything, any building, that allows them to get a building permit before going to hack. Instead of playing their game, say no. Do not let them get a building permit. The building permit they pulled was for a clubhouse, which has an espresso bar. Nantucket has a lot of espresso bars, but it did not have one bedroom, affordable or otherwise. Please write a decision, instead of playing Groundhog Day, write a decision that says no, and explain why this project puts the health, safety, and welfare of a beloved Nantucket island at risk. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Durensis. So Attorney Haverty?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did want to address some of the comments that were made by the prior speakers. With regards to the alleged lack of water capacity to fight fires, I think at the last meeting, we had the director of the water company here, and he indicated that they have sufficient capacity. So I'm not really quite sure why that remains an outstanding item. Mrs. Durensis claimed that there are hidden changes to the plans. That's simply not correct. There has been additional information provided from the time of the Housing Appeals Committee process to the submittal of the final plans. That's typical in every single Chapter 40B development. The lighting issue, again, it's very, very common in 40B developments for lighting to be issued post-permit, for lighting to be addressed post-permit. And if there's waivers required for the lighting, then they might actually go forward and address those prior to the permit issuing. But if they're intending to comply with all applicable local rules and regulations, lighting tends to be something that gets addressed after the process has been completed. No different than what's being proposed here. The claim that none of the 10 projects cited by Mr. Bracken in his comment letter are compatible, I think is just not accurate. I don't think, when you're talking about the impacts of impervious area on stormwater, it doesn't really matter whether it's residential or commercial, whatever the type of use is, is relevant, is irrelevant to the impacts of the stormwater. I took great umbrage at Mr. Durensis claiming that the letter that I submitted to the board as it relates to the fire safety issues was untrue. In fact, it was 100% accurate. The statements by Mr. Souza in his testimony, first as it relates to the emergency access, that is not proposed as a fire access road, it's proposed as an emergency access. It is not required to meet the width requirements of a fire access road. It is only required to meet the requirements of an emergency access. That is going to be limited only to emergency vehicles. It does not need to be wider than 15 feet wide, and that's why Mr. Souza did not review that, because it was inapplicable. And the same thing goes with the other issue that Mr. Durensis talked about from Mr. Souza's commentary, again. When he's saying that something is not applicable to the project, he's covering it. That is saying that that is something that did not need to be reviewed because there is no particular state or local rule that addresses that matter. So it did not need to be reviewed. That is addressing the issue. And any other issues that weren't raised during the initial process that are brought up in this process, we certainly would address. But the point of my letter is, any access issues that are previously raised, that have already been addressed through the Housing Appeals Committee process, have been already covered, and we're not intending to go over them again. We've already gone through a full process, a full hearing, and a full decision by the Housing Appeals Committee on those issues. The issue of the lack of, purported lack of water supply for fighting fire, I think is an enormous red herring here. Because what is proposed is 156 condominium units in 18 residential structures, all of which will have sprinkler systems. Unlike the Veranda fire, which was on a large building that did not have a sprinkler system, all of these residential buildings will be required to have sprinkler systems. The project as originally proposed, and that's what this board is supposed to be doing in this process, is comparing the original project to the proposed modified project. That development had 96 condominium units in varying-sized buildings, some of which included duplexes, and 60 single-family houses. The single-family houses and the duplex units would not be required to have individual sprinkler systems in those buildings, therefore creating a larger fire risk than would be associated with fully sprinklered buildings. So again, I don't see any issue or concern as it relates to fire safety for the modified project that is not either more significant or the same as what was contained in the original project, and I don't see that as an issue that's properly before this board. As it regards the stormwater standards, I did submit a letter to the board earlier this week, and I wanted to recap exactly what I covered in that letter, which is that the board's review of the, this project as an entirety is limited by the terms of the remand order and by the terms of the regulations, which is 760 CMR 56.05 subsection 11C. 760 CMR 56.05 subsection 11C states that when you're talking about a modification, only the changes in the project or aspects of the project affected thereby shall be at issue in this hearing. And that's what's applicable throughout this process, is it's only aspects that are changed from our original proposal to this proposal. As I noted in my letter, the total amounts of pervious slash impervious area in the project as originally proposed and as modified are almost identical. The modified project actually has a slightly lower total amount of pervious slash semi-pervious area. It's a reduction of just over 2,000 square feet. The original project, if you count the approximately 20,000 square feet of pervious pavement proposed in the original project, if you counted that as impervious, then we'd be looking at about an 18,709 square foot increase for the modified project. But the semi-pervious surfaces, the pervious pavements, still have a stormwater impact. They do not get completely wiped out of a calculation as it amounts to impervious. And I did want to point out that the Nantucket Land and Water Council submitted a letter addressing the stormwater issue. In that letter, they included as an exhibit a copy of a decision that was issued by the Walpole Zoning Board of Appeals on a comprehensive permit application in which Mr. Riordan, who is the consultant for the Nantucket Land and Water Council, advised, I don't recall whether he was advising the board or in a butter, however, he did submit testimony during the course of that hearing that's reflected in that decision, in which he states that the addition of pervious parking areas in the proposal did not address his concerns because the water would infiltrate directly rather than going through a treatment system. And he essentially felt that the addition of the pervious pavement area was actually a worse condition than what was originally approved. So again, I would argue that as it relates to the stormwater for this project, it's either the same, or it's actually slightly less as it relates to stormwater impacts, which is why I don't believe that this board has any jurisdiction to review this issue in this process. But we will be submitting something in writing addressing the specifics as it relates to the pervious pavement areas prior to the next meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And does Megan Perry still have her hand up? Yes, she does. Okay, so let's give her a chance.
Thank you very much. I was going to follow up on a couple of comments. Are we striving for minimums? Are we really trying to go for the minimum standard here on things? I don't think it's going to come as any great surprise to anybody that this project is going to go to appeal. So you might as well deny it, you might as well put in all the restrictions you would like to, because minimum standards is really not that great. Especially for a developer who is looking for waivers from every local bylaw, rule, regulation that's put in place to protect our community. So please think back to what Mr. Horsley said, Land and Water Council's expert on our water situation. And just because we've always done it one way doesn't mean we continue to contaminate our community, doesn't mean that that's the right way. We learn, we evolve. I think there was an example that we used to encourage pregnant women to smoke cigarettes. We've learned that's kind of a bad thing to do. So just because we've always done it that way, or the developer's engineer feels that every project on island does it this way, doesn't mean that that's the standard we should be shooting for. Minimum standards should not be it. I did have a question, well, I don't know if it's really a question, but when talking about sprinklers, the Veranda House fire started outside the building, so sprinklers probably wouldn't have done any good. But where do you think the water for these miracle sprinklers are coming from? It's coming from the municipal water source that we're afraid of pulling the contamination plume into. So great, you have sprinklers, great, you're going to draw on our water system. And along with that, I'd like to just follow up. This is from the fire chief. Again, this development places an overwhelming responsibility on the fire department. If an emergency were to arise, the potential load for one empty apartment building would require 5,200 gallons of water per minute to extinguish an impossible mark to meet for the department. By simple math, that's 312,000 gallons per hour. If each water tower that we have, and we have two in total on island, can hold up to 2 million gallons of water when they are full, which they are not always full, you can drive by any one of them, and look, you can see the condensation on the outside and see on average, they're maybe three-quarters of the way full, it's kind of a neat thing to go do if you're aboard in the summertime. So if you have one of the 18 buildings at Surfside Crossing, or 19 buildings, sorry, including the clubhouse, burning for 12 hours, it would require 3,744 gallons of water, based on the fire chief's assessment and the statement in the comprehensive permit. If it were to burn as long as just the one Veranda House fire did, that is, if the infrastructure can support getting the water to this location. And when I, when I say that, I'm saying that because we don't have the infrastructure. If we have wells taken offline, one fire truck can pump 1,000 gallons per minute. That means four fire trucks pumping at full capacity will deplete the system's ability to keep up. And in the summer, if you get two Veranda House-sized incidents, that would deplete what we have. So again, I think we need to be looking at that. And remember, that's the position of the fire department, that the proposed design and size, we can't do it. I think we know that this is a risk, and we need to stop putting profit over risk. We need to stop doing profit over the health, safety, and welfare of the community. So that's just kind of my very quick responses to a couple of things that were said. And again, please look back at documents that are already in the record on this stuff. The fire chief, Chief Murphy, what he had to say about things and his concerns, I think those are important. I think it's important to look at what the water department had said at the CPC meeting regarding the fact that the water pressure decreased, that we have wells taken offline due to contamination. We don't need to keep going down that road. The ZBA right now has the ability to be on the right side of history. You need to think about what you want your legacy to be. Is it drawing more PFAS into the municipal wells because we're allowing high-density developments to occur? I wouldn't want that on my shoulders. So please deny this project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Tafe?
Yep, Patrick Tafe, 21 O'Quinn. Just because we're talking about fire and fire safety, I don't even know if this needs to be said, but- to be said, but it's great that if they were to build these, they would have sprinkler systems. And the sprinkler systems help put out fires in a house and help get people outside, but they don't stop a fire outside of a house. So if the neighborhood's on fire, the sprinkler systems are moot. And that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just wanted to say that we still have one person online.
Let's, you can go first, and then we'll go to the person online, okay? Have they been waiting a long time?
She was the second person after Megan.
Okay, so let's do this, and then, okay.
Thank you, members of the board. Dennis Murphy for the Nantucket Land and Water Council. I have two comments, one legal, one more empirical. It's really rare for a 40B to go through the HAC, up to Superior Court, get vacated, and then back to a board. Really rare. So I want to remind the board, I think I said this the first time a few months ago, when the Superior Court issued a judgment, it vacated the HAC, everything. So when people are submitting to you prefiled testimony from HAC, I question its legal significance because the entire HAC decision has been vacated by a Superior Court judge. And I wanted to read to you from page 15 of the judge's decision, which was just over a year ago, about how the judge was thinking about his intention of what you would be doing. Remember, the reason the HAC was vacated is because they didn't cumulatively evaluate the changes to the project. They were saying, "The height is not quite 10%, and the open space is not quite 10%, and we're gonna say it's insubstantial." What the judge said repeatedly in his decision is, "You have to evaluate these changes cumulatively." And at the end, he says, this is the bottom of page 15, "This error of law also requires reversal of the HAC's substantiality decision and remand to the board for consideration of the altered project in the first instance." That's the court's words. "Remand to this board for consideration in the first instance." People keep telling you what you can and cannot do in this proceeding. It's a public hearing, and I would advise you, you take counsel from your own lawyer, but the judge is saying that you're the ones to review changes in the first instance. And if it goes somewhere else, so be it, we'll deal with it when it gets there. The second point, and this is a lawyerly point, the scope of the remand order, I was there when we discussed this, we had issues that we anticipated would be part of this, but lawyers don't always know what's gonna happen. And that's why when they wrote the remand order, it said that you, there may be, and this is a quote from page 2 of the remand order, it's paragraph 4G, "other matters within the scope of remand that are affected by the proposed modifications that are currently unanticipated." So the notion that you don't have any ability to consider issues that I've brought forward and the Land and Water Council have championed, because somehow those are a vested interest and they get to, they already got their permit to pollute and they can continue to do, that's baloney. Please don't fall into that trap. The judge told you, you have the right to consider things in the first instance. The HAC's own order has a phrase that anticipates that you have the scope within unanticipated things like that. And so I think it is an issue that the board should continue to engage on. Now, I said I had two points. The empirical point, I wanted to go back to the gentleman who's the engineer, Ryan, thinking that all of the comments have been addressed. I count at least a half dozen on stormwater alone that remain open. Mr. Mandani had one, "There's no low-impact development." Now, Cheshire will tell you, that's not a requirement, but it's a consideration. I don't think it's even been considered. For a project of this scope, it is very typical that there be some low-impact development in the design. Issue number two, the stormwater was designed using TP-40. TP-40 is data from the 1950s in a study published in 1961, and the version of the stormwater handbook that is in circulation to be revised forbids using TP-40. I know design engineers who've been at this for a long time say, "Oh, TP-40, there's no problem." But you're starting off with precipitation data that's more than 65 years old. That's not a good place. You're also starting off with a design engineer who didn't know it was a LUPL. LUPL, I don't remember the acronym, but it's a higher pollutant load. When you design a stormwater system that is a garden variety, regular stormwater system, you can't expect it's going to address the things that are in a higher pollutant load or in a critical area like a Zone 2. Number three, Cheshire suggests that you get a water quality expert. What I heard last time is, they're not gonna pay for it. We, at the Land and Water Council's expense, we did provide an engineer and a water quality expert, and if you don't have any contrary evidence about what might happen, then you could credit their testimony, absent anything to the contrary. The fourth issue, and this is an important one, there are generators, and it's not even been discussed whether these are gonna be diesel generators, gas generators, and there should be neither in the Zone 2. Any generator should have to be an electric generator or some kind of solar generator, something that won't put any kind of risk to the Zone 2. Finally, Cheshire suggests that one thing you might do to protect groundwater quality is monitoring wells. There's been no response from the applicant to your own peer review engineer, who has suggested one way to evaluate the groundwater quality is to put monitoring wells. The last point I would make, and I don't know if we're up to six or whatever many it is, your own local bylaw, 13912G, it's subparagraph 2Q1, actually requires that subsurface infiltration is not an acceptable method for non-residential development in a Zone 2. It says that. Cheshire's only reviewing under the state stormwater regulations, but you on this board have to consider whether to waive your own local zoning. What Reardon said, if you go back and look at his letter, is that provision is good guidance. Now, technically, this may be a residential facility, but this is multifamily, and it has the impact and the scope of a non-residential, and therefore that his opinion is that subsurface infiltration is not acceptable. Even if it might be under the state stormwater standards, it isn't under your local bylaw. That's his interpretation. He's not here today, but it's in his letter. The last point I'll make is, even if I missed this the first time around, completely missed it, it is, there is no vested right, there's no grandfathering, the term we used to use, on a public health and safety issue. If this really is the issue that the experts are saying, whether or not it was missed the last time, we really have to engage on it this time. And I wish that I saw more engagement from the applicant team. They seem to be telling you, "You can't engage, we won't engage, we're not even gonna pay for a peer reviewer to study this for you." I sat in your shoes on my own town zoning board for almost a decade. That was never the answer I wanted to hear, and I wish I had better news for you because in these projects, you like to see movement toward the middle, towards some kind of compromise. And I fear where we're headed right now is a standoff, unfortunately. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. We can go to the woman on soon. Aisha Khan, you should be able to speak.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Aisha Khan, and I'm a year-round resident on the island of Nantucket and co-founder of Nantucket PFAS Action Group. As a member of our community and someone concerned about the long-term risks of PFAS and chemical pollution, I feel it's my responsibility to express some of my concerns. The plan, as currently pitched, does give me some pause. While I understand the importance of addressing our housing crisis, you know, me, like a lot of others out here, do want housing for our community members. We must ensure the benefits of any project outweigh the risks that they pose. Throughout the meetings, I've been tuning in and I've heard a lot of claims that the plan complies with state regulations, is in accordance with law, is compliant with state laws. I think it's important to reflect on what these phrases mean. Meeting state regulations ensures a project satisfies minimum standards, but it doesn't guarantee that it's safe. Compliance with state law doesn't necessarily address localized risks such as Nantucket's reliance on a sole aquifer, groundwater recharge needs, or the cumulative impacts nearby developments would have. While these terms might sound reassuring, they often overlook the nuances and the vulnerabilities specific to our community. This is precisely why the ZBA exists. This is why we're here. The board is there to go beyond the baseline of compliance and determine whether a project aligns with the safety and sustainability of our local environment. And I don't think we need to overlook that each new development and high-density development, especially in a Zone 2 area, does add stress to our aquifer. Allowing excessive impervious surfaces blocks the natural water filtration, leading to polluted runoff that carries harmful substances like PFAS into our water supply. Particularly, I'm concerned with exceeding 15% impervious surface limits. This can cause serious problems. And while projects in the past may have been approved with similar risks, we now understand these effects and the long-term effects. The project was pitched in 2018, we weren't talking about chemicals like PFAS back then. What may have worked in the past or was acceptable before may no longer meet today's standards and public safety, health, and concerns. We have PFAS in our aquifer, it's not a hypothetical, whether it's shallow, deep, we have it in our aquifer, and we have community members who are drinking it, and that deeply worries me. We can put filters in it, but as we pollute the aquifer more or allow it to get polluted more, those filters are harder to prevent breakthroughs, and it does get more expensive. These financial burdens comes and falls onto us as taxpayers and onto our town municipalities. This is why reducing the impervious surfaces, in my opinion, is important. Enhancing stormwater management and prioritizing proactive safeguards are essential. So I want to end with, I fully support and encourage the board to be bold, continue doing what you're doing, ask these tough questions. Thank you from me as a community member. Challenge the information provided, and if you need, seek independent evaluations. We fully support that. Consultants paid by the developer may prioritize the developer's goals of maximizing millions in profits over the community's long-term safety. The ZBA serves as a vital safeguard for me and our community. Ensuring that developments align with our community's long-term goals without overburdening our infrastructure is what we all would like to see. Your oversight is very essential and important. Thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to address the comments from Attorney Murphy, but before I do that, I did want to address one of the comments from Ms. Perry. I hesitate to do so, in a sense, because I'm not an engineer and I'm not clear on these impacts, but I guess I don't understand the concept of drawing water from your municipal water supply to fight a fire, and then because there are contaminants in that currently, you're going to then put contaminants into your water supply. If they're already there, I don't think fighting the fire and then having that runoff infiltrated, treated in a stormwater system, and then put back into your aquifer is going to result in additional contaminants. I think it's gonna result in less contaminants, fewer contaminants. So I'm not really clear on the logic behind that statement. As it relates to Attorney Murphy's comments, he pointed out the provision in the remand order from the Housing Appeals Committee that is sort of the catch-all provision, which I would note was actually put in there at Mr. Murphy's suggestion, and we certainly didn't object to it because we thought that that was an appropriate inclusion. But the key language in that provision is that it applies to the changes that are affected by the proposed changes. And that's what we're talking about here, and that relates back to the provisions in 760 CMR 56.05 subsection 11 subsection C, which again states that only the changes in the project or aspects of the projects affected thereby shall be at issue in such hearing. That is part of a duly promulgated regulation by the Executive Office of Housing in Livable Communities that is applicable to every Chapter 40B modification. And so what we are saying is that the changes in the stormwater from the original project to the modified project aren't affected. There is a minimal reduction in impervious slash semi-pervious area, there's a small increase in terms of just semi-pervious area because the original project had a 20,000-square-foot area of permeable pavement. But again, and we will provide correspondence to the board addressing this issue, but ultimately when you look at how you calculate the stormwater impacts, I don't think that there's any significance to that minimal increase. So our position remains that essentially the stormwater impacts from the modified project are the same as the stormwater impacts from the original project, and therefore that is not something that's appropriate to be reviewed as part of this process. Thank you.
Mr. Pucci?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. George Pucci from KP Law. You know, you're hearing a lot from lawyers, and it was great the last hearing, you had started to get into more sort of witness testimony, expert testimony, department heads. I would recommend you return to that sort of process as opposed to debating what's before you. I've told you before, and I'll stand by it if I have to defend the decision. The scope of review before you is quite broad. It does have the catch-all provision that Attorney Murphy had mentioned, and I don't, I'm not saying that Attorney Haverty is incorrect about his citation to the regulations. It's clear, that's the normal case. In this case, it's very unusual that you had a four-year lapse between the time the matter should have been remanded to you and today. And so I'm not telling you how to or suggesting to you in any way, shape, or form how you should come out on your decision concerning the expert testimony that's been presented to you. But what I am saying is, you should consider everything, you know, and I recommend you use your hearing time to get as much information and testimony on the record as possible, and then later on, when you're deliberating, you've received as much information as you can, you're gonna act on this project change in good faith. But you should definitely, I would recommend strongly, you stop, I know you're not debating it, but let's stop wasting hearing time on lawyers debating the scope of review. The scope of review, in my opinion, is broad. You have the catch-all provision, and you have this extraordinary four-year lapse that would quite frankly, in my opinion, be irresponsible for you not to consider current conditions. So you- You may still look at it and consider PFAS and other issues and still accept the testimony that the applicant has presented to you. So I would recommend you rule on these issues on a substantive basis and not try to limit the scope of your review in any way, shape, or form. Later on, if I think you're well beyond your jurisdiction, as you know, I'm not hesitant to give you my advice. But so far, I'm not seeing you doing anything that's outside of your jurisdiction. So I would recommend that you, you know, continue your technical analysis and review. Hopefully, that's helpful.
It is, thank you. Thank you for giving us some, hold on, some guardrails after the last bit of discussion. Is there anyone else online that has a hand up at this point? Because I'd like to move on to the architectural review.
Megan Perry has her hand raised, and Mr. Duransis has his hand raised.
Okay. Let's let Mr. Tafe go first.
If I have a minute to speak, I'd like to give that time to Megan Perry, please.
Oh, okay. All right, so I guess we'll hear from Megan and then Mr. Duransis, and then I do want to move on to our next section.
Megan, you're on.
Okay, thank you so much. I just wanted to explain how contamination, plume, and physics works, so it's a little bit easier for everybody to understand why adding and pulling from our aquifer, why that is a problem. So if you could imagine dropping, let's say, a red skittle into a fish tank, and you see the red dye kind of go everywhere. Now, let's put 10 straws in one end of the fish tank and suck up the water. You'll start to see the red dye move. That's the contaminant. That is moving. Let's say you add 200 more customers or 200 more straws, and you suck up the water. You'll see the red dye move a lot faster. So I'm not sure if Mr. Haverty didn't understand how contaminants or plumes or physics works, but I just wanted to make sure I explained that. And that is what the water director was talking about for why he was taking wells offline, because he did not want to draw the plume closer to the deep-well aquifers. Right now, the PFAS is in the upper aquifer where the shallower wells are. He's trying to prevent the plume of contamination from going into the lower aquifer and making it so every well is contaminated, not just well 15 and 16. So yes, it is a concern to me when you're using these magical sprinklers to put out a fire, how much you're drawing on our only sole-source aquifer as a way of putting out the fire. That's my concern. And again, I don't know that sprinklers are going to be the miracle that puts out a major veranda house-sized fire or multiple veranda house-sized fires, especially if we have wells offline that decrease the water pressure so we don't pull the contamination into more of our municipal wells. You're asking to make the choice between pulling contamination into municipal wells or decreasing the water pressure. Neither is a good choice to have to make, and high-density development only exacerbates that problem. That's my concern. Also, I know that Attorney Haverty had said that they disagree with what firefighter Bo Barber had said, and I'm just curious, shall we call him next time there's a fire that breaks out and see if the SUSEA theory holds water? No pun intended. Thank you.
Okay. Alisa, what do you have a question for?
Just while we're on the subject of fighting fires, I know we're talking a lot about water supply and water pressure when it comes to fighting fires, and the sprinklers in and the fire hoses out, and 19 structures, that's 18 residential plus the clubhouse, being on fire at the same time or in phases. But what we're not talking about is the people who we're trying to protect from the fires and the people that are going to be standing outside and trying to run away from the fire, whether on foot or in their cars. They're like corralled in to this subdivision with only one escape route, and that's where all the fire trucks are going to be coming in, and people are going to be trying to get out in their cars. This is a death trap, like Duransis said. And that, I mean, let's talk about the people that are going to be affected by this. How are they getting out? Are they running into their neighbors' yards? Are they, how are they taking their families? Are they going to pull their kids through the brush? Like, I'm not getting how everybody's escaping. The residents are escaping at midnight from this space with only one access. And let's just say they started to use the little emergency access that's 15 feet wide. That's still not enough for 300-plus people. That's what we're really, we're talking about fire, we're talking about water, but we're talking about the people and how they're getting away and saving their lives. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Duransis, and then we're going to move on to, oh, yeah, sorry, Jim. Want to, Duransis first, and then you'll go?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay, Mr. Duransis. Oh, you're muted, Mr. Duransis.
The presentation by Attorney Haverty that tries to compute comparison of the stormwater before and stormwater after it got remanded continues to leave out a fundamental fact. They clear-cut the project. They changed the topography. It's now a desert. I hope the Board of Appeals went and saw it for yourselves, so you don't have to take my word for it. But if you went to see it and did a site visit, you know that this is a different project than what Mr. Haverty is talking about. And that change completely by itself justifies your ability to review the stormwater features that are being presented to you by Land and Water Council. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Jim, you had a comment?
Yeah, just, we covered a lot of ground here, and I just have a few follow-up questions.
Okay.
First of all, Mr. Chessie, I know this, in your latest, this TP40 data, it looks like there are alternative sources that have updated data. Why can't they just use it? And if, would this make a big difference, or could it make a difference if the rainfall was different?
The rainfall likely would be different. Nantucket being the island that it is, it's a little different than the mainland rainfall, and I'm not as familiar with the specifics out there, but, you know, I've looked at this for many, many projects over a long period of time. There's two sources that are newer. One is from Cornell. They have a climate center at Cornell, and they publish rainfall for the northeastern states. And there's also what's called NOAA, National Ocean and Atmospheric Association. NOAA Atlas 14 is much more up to date. These are sort of interactive things. You can go in the computer, click on it. You can click actually the exact, you know, GPS latitude and longitude of the site and get the rainfall. I haven't done a comparison to see exactly what it is and how different it is for the mainland areas. It's typically higher for bigger events in terms of like a 100-year storm or 50-year storm, 25. In the case of smaller rainfalls, like the 2, the 10, it isn't quite so different. It might be a little higher. The bigger storms are, tend to be bigger. I'm not 100% certain on Nantucket because you may not get the same sort of big storm that the rest of the mainland gets just because it might blow over quicker there, and it might, there's not as much to stall it maybe, I don't know. But yeah, there are other ones. They're pretty easy to use.
And do you agree with Mr. Murphy's statement that TP40 should probably not have been used? Calculating things.
So here's, this is a little strange. DEP is in the process of changing the regulations for the stormwater, and they have been, I think, for like many years now. It was supposed to happen prior to COVID. They have still not changed it. They still specify TP40. That, I mean, that's how behind they are. I mean, TP40, like Attorney Murphy said, is based on stuff from like the 50s. There's more time now since TP40 was published, there's more rainfall data since TP40 than was used to develop TP40. So yeah, whether or not it would make much of a difference, I can't say. But it's certainly something that, you know, could be a consideration, but it may be something that isn't that big of a change on Nantucket. I'm not sure.
And then, just want to follow up with you, Mr. Chessie, on the planned comparison, and this goes back to our first meeting on this, when I said, what do we, what's the stick in the ground by which we measure things?
Yep.
You've heard there are changes, but when I look at your chart, you have the initial submission, the hack-approved plan, which we hear about, and I understand those changes. But then there's the exhibit plan showing another difference. So in the case of total building area, in impervious, semi-pervious, in unusual open space, in usable open space, sorry, unusable, there are significant differences between what was submitted to us over the past six months or four months and the hack-approved. So is that correct? Am I interpreting it correctly?
Yes, so what I did, I didn't do any of my own measurements other than adding and subtracting data. So I took the plans and what was listed on the plans and listed it here. So basically, you had your initial submission, which was way back February 2018. The April 29 was what you approved, but that was sort of a, wasn't as detailed of a plan. So there's a lot of information not there. The HAC-approved plan, February 28, 2020, that pretty much had all those tables that I'm listing on my comparison, that those are the tables. And then Exhibit 1 plan is what was provided for that my, when I initially did this update review for this, these meetings, that's what, that's off of those plans. So I'm not measuring anything different, I'm just listing on plan data, and that's what you get. So yes, there are, those are the changes from plan to plan. So there was an increase. I think what happened is between the HAC-approved plan and the Exhibit 1 plan, some of the MEPA stuff came in, so they added the 25-foot buffer, so you might have more unusable space because that's sort of like a, kind of a no-touch area. I'm not sure how all the other numbers came about from their plans. This is, like I said, again, this is what they, this is right off, you can look at any one of these items, look at their tables, this is where it comes from.
Okay, thank you. I guess my follow-up for you, George, is this is another change. So if we're, if we listen to Mr. Haverty, it's the hack-approved plans we're measuring, and yet they changed the numbers, a lot of this impervious, important stuff in the context of the water quality.
Yeah, you've got to go by the plan that they submitted in support of this project change.
Which is, so I guess my question is, do we go through a whole nother hearing of making a determination whether there are additional changes or, you know, do that analysis of whether they're important or not and open up a hearing on those?
Right. I don't think I would recommend making a determination if they're substantial or not. I think I'd look at them and act on them. In other words, go by, go by the further change plan. What was approved by HAC is irrelevant, and your review of that final plan was a wholly different process is also irrelevant. So you've got to look at what they've submitted on this
Okay.
...project change from a mix of 156 single-family residences and condo buildings to and all condominium building project at 156 units. So if they've, if they've updated their plans since the time of the remand, you need to look at those and act on those.
So therein lies the problem, because we don't know which plans. Like, can they change things on a weekly basis on their summer?
Can I ask a follow-up on that? Just what you're asking? So, George, so to follow up with Jim, and I'm just, I'm sorry to interrupt you, I just wanted to say it as you're asking this. So the plan, so the 156 mixed, like, single-family dwelling and duplexes and condos.
Right.
That's the plan that was before us when we made the decision that reduced it to 60 units.
Correct.
The 60 units was then determined, or the developer argued was uneconomic.
Yes.
Okay.
They argued a number of other things.
Right, right, but that was one of the things. And so we're back to that 156 mixed use. We know that they argued the 60, one of the arguments was that this, what we proposed made it uneconomic. Can we then not ask for the pro forma to show why it's economic?
Yeah, no, no, that, you know, in my opinion, that would be off-base.
Okay.
And Attorney Murphy had some very telling language, which I'm glad he pointed out in the first instance, because that's always the language that I focused on with a, with a plan change.
Okay.
So you got your 100, you got your mixed 156 unit plan.
Sorry, so that kind of comes out too, that does, we're just back to the 156.
Yeah, you're taking that, and then you're comparing it to the project change, and then you're, and this is where that language is very important. You are acting on the project change in the first instance.
Okay.
So you're looking at, yes, your scope of review is limited to changes caused by that change and the repercussions.
But can't we, but can't we, but we're not, we never approved the original 156 mixed use. So we could, like, just say, like, one of the options, one of these pathways that we could go or that we may end up, right, there's deny, there's approve with conditions, and there's approve as-is. But we could approve with conditions, but we could approve a plan that says 156, given all of this talk, is just too much. We get, we do know whether it's that 60 would be too little, we could end up somewhere between like 90 and 135, just guessing. I'm just throwing that out, not saying that's what I want, but just.
Yeah.
But that's an option too, because we're looking, or is that only relative to the change?
That's what I, that's what I focus on in the first instance.
Okay.
You're basically treating it like a full public hearing.
Okay.
Just like you would in the original application on the project change. You're limited to the changes by the project change. But again, you have to remember that this is an unusual circumstance where you, had you considered it then, four years ago, in the first instance, there may not, there may not have been some of the issues that have come up in this hearing.
So had we considered the 156 condo unit, the changed condo units in the first instance?
Yes.
Before it even went up to hack? How would we respond?
Exactly.
Okay.
So you need to, and again, your options are exactly the same as on the original application. You can deny the project, you can accept it as-is, or you can grant the project with conditions. And that's what you did on the first application, that's what you do on the project change.
Okay.
Just to follow up, George, so the hack-approved plan, I mean, this would otherwise set it up so a developer can change their plans all the time. You're saying
Yeah.
...that what was submitted from that plan that hack-approved and remanded to us has changed again. I don't even know when they were changed, but how can you do that in this process?
I mean, yeah, no, I understand what you're saying.
And I don't doubt they'll change it again.
Yeah, no, it's difficult, but, but I think the way I would conceptualize it is, again, if you go back in time, if the HAC had remanded it at the time, you wouldn't have a fully-completed set of plans on the project change when they came back before you. In other words, if they'd given you the option, you would have said, yes, this is a substantial change, it requires a public hearing. And then they would have updated their plans. I mean, let's be real about that. So I'm not, I'm not discounting in any way, you know, claims that, you know, things have been changed or whatever, but, but as part of this process, within reason, if you have a project change... if you have a project change, they're going to update their plans. And, and then as part of the hearing process too, they, they will, they have the opportunity to update their plans. Not to come up with a, you know, fully changed, substantially changed project, but as they go through this process with you, they can update their plans and make certain changes. But you, you have to remember that, and you have to distinguish between what the developer is submitting here, uh, in your hearing, when they're submitting prefiled testimony from the HAC proceeding, the way I would look at that, I would recommend looking at it is they're submitting that to you as though it's in the first instance.
Right.
They're, they're not submitting that to you because you're bound to find what HAC found based on that. They're only submitting that because they're saying this supports what we're saying, that this improves the original project, you know, for instance. So that prefiled testimony that, that they're submitting is only relevant to you in the first instance. But, but that hack approved plan really just further confuses things. I think you really have to look at it just, you went from a hundred fifty-six mixed, uh, units to an all condo project. What are the plans that they have submitted to us in the first instance on our remand hearing? And that's, that's the way I think you have to look at it.
Okay.
And, and then you're, you're free also to clarify with, with the developer. I, I see you left out the sidewalk.
Right.
Why did you do that? What, you know, are you going to put it back in? You know, questions like that, those are good questions that, that you want to clarify.
Okay.
Uh, and one more follow-up to your question, the, uh, and maybe we'll hear an answer from Mr. Haverty, but I thought in reading the regulations, if they argue that the project of what we propose is uneconomic, then we should be entitled to review why it was uneconomic.
Yeah.
And so can we review why it was uneconomic?
They're not, no, I, I, I would not go back to that. It, what you can do is if, while the hearing is open, if you say, look, we, and again, this is a for instance, I'm not telling you, you should rule this way, but say you were to rule in the hypothetical. I find, uh, Mr. Riordan and Mr. Horace Lee's testimony compelling. Uh, we are going to require rain gardens. We're going to require whatever it is that they say. The applicant can say a couple of things in response to that. They can say, we're not providing that, or go ahead and issue your decision doing it, and then we're going to appeal, or they can say, you can't reduce my project that way. It renders it uneconomic. And then you can require the pro forma. My, my guess is the applicant would probably say to you, that's not reasonable. It's not within your jurisdiction uh, to ask for that. So we're not going to provide the pro forma to you. And then you're left in, in the instance of, then how do you deal with that when you render your decision? So a lot of these are kind of hypotheticals based on, you know, a certain chain of events, but you know, that, that's kind of the, the gist of it.
Except in this case, we had a proposal. We, we said, we created a plan that was approved, and they argued that it was uneconomic.
Yes.
So how was it uneconomic is what I, I mean, that's part of our decision of like, if, if you do increase it, how many can we increase it without impacting a lot of things? If we went that route, I don't understand why that can't be a piece of our analysis. And I don't, I don't, tell me where the regs, uh, provide that provision.
In, in terms of what though? Are you saying that?
That it's required when it's, when it's deemed uneconomic. I think the regs say that, uh, the zoning board can see, request that information.
Only when the, when you're imposing a condition and the developer is saying that renders it uneconomic. And you, you haven't had that conversation yet. You haven't had, you haven't said yet, I'm going to reduce your project, uh,
But, but aren't we going back to, if we're going back to, if we're going back like they came back and said that this was a substantial change, then I, I'm, I'm with Jim. I'm not seeing how, where we were was we had rendered a decision. It, we, what got appealed to hack, and the argument was made that the sixty units, however, I can't even remember how they broke down, but however that was, was unecon, one of the arguments was that that was uneconomic.
Right.
So if we're
That, that was also in the context of an appeal to HAC, which they have the initial burden.
Yeah.
If it's a approval with conditions as opposed to a denial, they have the initial burden of proving that it's uneconomic.
And that just didn't happen?
What did, no, it did happen. They, they litigated that at HAC, but
Oh, so they proved it's uneconomic, so we don't have to, we don't get the pro forma then?
No, no. Not for that reason, because again, what was litigated in HAC is irrelevant now before you. What I'm saying is you haven't had a discussion yet with them.
So like our other decision is out? The comp permit that we recorded is out?
Yes, unless, you know, unless you're treating it like, okay, we think our original decision makes, makes sense for this one.
Okay, all right. I guess I get it then.
Our dialogue now, not when it gets to HAC, we're not entitled to that. If it's challenged at the HAC.
What happened last time was, um, you'll recall the, um, there was a hundred unit compromise plan. And that was before you and, and the developer had sort of limited you, I think, to like one hearing session on it. You had that hearing, and then you had to close the hearing. You deliberated. You ended up issuing the sixty unit approval. The hearing was closed, so the developer couldn't say to you, this renders it uneconomic, and then they had the burden at HAC. You know, and I, I should say it happens a lot. You know, developers, and I'm not, again, this has nothing to do with this particular developer, but forty B is a general practice. You very rarely see in a public hearing before ZBA that economics analysis, because usually you have so many technical issues, and you're standing in the shoes of so many boards and department heads, that, that you've only got so much hearing time, and you try to do as much substance as you can. And then you're under a deadline to issue the decision. So typically, boards don't have the chance on a big project to cover all the issues a couple of months, you know, prior to the deadline, start to, you know, talk about an actual decision, and then have the developer make that claim in the public hearing. So you very rarely see the, the pro forma, you know, in the ZBA hearing. It usually does come up at HAC because that's the first time they have the initial burden.
Okay, okay. Mr. Haverty?
Thank you. Um, I, I did want to cover the, the issue raised by Board Member Mondani as it relates to the changes between the plans that were approved by the Housing Appeals Committee and the ones that were submitted and reviewed by this board. So the way Chapter forty B works, an applicant is only required to submit preliminary plans. They do not have to be fully designed, um, building permit style plans. So that is what was submitted to the board with the original application for the ninety-six condominium unit, sixty single-family house development. That was what was submitted to the Housing Appeals Committee, perhaps with a little more detail than the original plans, but still preliminary plans. After the Housing Appeals Committee issued its decision and my client decided to move forward at risk, it submitted final detailed plans for this board to review. Those detailed plans included additional information such as ADA compliant ramps and, and other issues that increased the amount of impervious area on the property because it was including issues that weren't addressed in the original plans and that are not addressed in the, the plans that were submitted for the original application. So when you're comparing the two, you need to compare the original preliminary plans against the modified preliminary plans. Because otherwise you're comparing apples to oranges. Because the original plans don't have that level of detail and that additional impervious area that will be required in order to move forward with those plans, but, but they've never been developed because you know, my client is no longer pursuing that option. Um, so that's why there is a difference between the two.
But you understand my concern is that we're, it's a moving part and there is clarification, and there's clarification where you make changes.
And, and again, what, what was submitted was, was the more detailed plan. As it relates to the pro forma issue, the, the way that it works is a board is entitled to review financial statements from a developer after it is completed, all other consultant review, and after it is provided to the applicant a decision that includes all of the proposed conditions and all of the proposed waiver decisions. It's not a matter of the, the board being able to come to the applicant and say, all right, we want to propose this condition. We're not going to tell you what other conditions are going to be involved, but we want to know, will this one condition render your project uneconomic? That's not the way the process works. The applicant needs to be able to review a fully integrated decision that they can make a determination. Yes, this is a decision we will live with, or no, this is a decision that we determine will render the project uneconomic. Anything short of that is not what the process contemplates.
Right, yeah, that, that makes sense.
Didn't, did we not, when we, with all the conditions, are you saying that? Well, that, that Have a chance to review it?
Well, no, that, so the board in its initial decision issued an approval for sixty units, which constituted forty single-family houses and twenty condominium units.
Right.
The, that pro forma review went through, you know, the full review from the Housing Appeals Committee. They issued a determination. It's, that's not on the table here, because the only thing this board is reviewing is the impacts between the project as originally proposed, which is the ninety-six condominium units, sixty single-family houses, and the current proposal, which is a hundred and fifty-six condominium units. There's never been any pro forma review of the difference between those two. And I honestly, I don't think that it's going to be worthwhile.
I don't think we're saying the same thing, but I think both attorneys, I think, but, but, wait, hold on one second.
Yeah.
Both of you, Poochie and Haverty, are both telling us we're not getting the pro forma, so, but so let's just move on.
Well, hold, hold on, Susan, because essentially the, the last part of what Paul said I do agree with, and this was my point about usually boards run out of time.
Yeah.
Because you're not at the point where you can do that fully developed decision, and then they say, no, either singly or in the aggregate, you render this uneconomic, uh, and then, then the board says, well, we want to see your pro forma. We, so if you, if you're ready to start deliberating and drafting a decision, and, and you've got time on the public hearing, you want to try to have that dialogue with them, you, you're free to go ahead and try to do that.
Right. So I think, I think Jim and I were sort of on the same page with that, thinking that because it was argued back originally, then we, we would have the ability now in this public hearing to do it, that we wouldn't have to re-argue that. But you're both saying no, so let's move on. It's, I don't want to waste any more time on it.
One other thing.
But I, I just want to be clear though. If, if you had public hearing time and you did, did have that fully developed decision, like he's saying, you, you could technically have that pro, you could demand that pro forma at that point.
I got you.
But, yeah, but we're not gonna, yeah.
I mean, does it, does
Well, that's what I said before. As a practical matter, you usually run out of time.
Okay.
And then, this isn't for George or anyone, but um, I, I read through, we, the, at least the select board got a a water quality study or a uh, hydro, hydrogeologic study.
Yeah.
Back in two thousand eighteen, the select board did.
Yeah.
Why can't we just update this? And get the consultant to update this to address some of the issues that are off.
Maybe ask, maybe ask a public comment at the select board meeting next week?
Well, no.
Like as a citizen.
No, and this is something that just came up. I mean, that I just discovered that I'm not sure why we're not following, but there is a comprehensive permit rules and regulations that the, we local board passed that we're not, we don't seem to be following.
Can I see that? I think I have that on my desk at work.
I don't recall it, but I was involved in it. And there's clearly a requirement, or clearly a mandate that we can ask or request these types of services, and they have the obligation to object to the select board, not us. It's not us to grovel to the select board. The process is well-defined.
Can we ask Billy to send those to us? I don't know.
I'm not sure why.
I think I have the state one. I don't think I have that one. Mine is like
Yeah. And there's a lot of other, I, I think the board should read this because
Okay.
it's applicable. It was filed before they, right before they filed uh, their application. I think it was done in anticipation of that.
Yeah.
And it's helpful, I think.
It might be, it might be what I have. I don't know.
Things that we struggle with.
Okay, it'd be good to do a refresh.
So I, can we, well, I guess we can wait till the next meeting after everyone reviews this.
Yeah.
To request this, because I, I would like these things to be in place before our hearings over, regardless of whether they object or not. I think that's important to demonstrate that we, we still have to pursue these things and, you know, we need to continue in public hearing, but
Okay, all right.
But one more person.
Oh, sorry. Mr. Murphy, then we're going to move, then we're going to move on to architectural review.
One minute, not on a legal matter. Uh, since we've gotten in the weeds on the scope of changes, I'd ask you to look at Mr. Chesh's, uh, most recent report from January twenty-first, page eight. He has a chart of how the projects have changed. The first column is the original proposal. The last column is the plan before you. It shows an increase of thirty-two thousand square feet.
And that's what I was getting at. That's what I'm referring to.
Yes. I, I did a similar calculation that I put in my letter to you earlier this week. Chester's right, I was wrong. I, I only had less than half an acre, but I didn't have the benefit of the fully engineered plan and looking at that. I went just by the ENF certificate, what was reported there. So, but either way, it's a material increase in the amount of pervious coverage. And in my view, that justifies the board considering this zone two issue because they're looking to put more impervious coverage in the zone two. And your own peer review engineer demonstrates that. That, by the way, thirty-two thousand square feet is just shy of three quarters of an acre. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
It's substantial.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I could just respond to that very, very quickly.
Okay, then I really want to move on.
Yeah, sorry. As I noted before, that, those adjustments, um, came because of the change from preliminary plans to final design plans. The exact same increase, uh, if not more, would be applicable to the original development plans because they didn't include the additional issues that were then added to the, the modified plans. So a, at the end of the day, there really isn't an increase. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So our next
Madam Chair, I just have a quick comment.
Sure.
It is three oh eight, and we have a, we have an end time at four. We, I don't have, I don't have consensus on the date for the next meeting, so we will need a few minutes at the end of the meeting to
Do that?
Yes.
All right, so let's plan to, let's try to get through, um, Lisa didn't think it would take too, too long, so yeah, so let's, let's make sure we're, we're wrap up at like ten of, or to just
Would you be able to pull up a site plan too?
Yes, definitely. Um, and I can remind the board too, with ten minutes left.
Okay.
Lisa, the site plan or?
Yeah, this is, yeah, because
Overall site plan?
Overall site plan. I think most of the concerns, there's material concerns, like, I don't know, we need to look at the, um, architectural plan to talk about that.
Can you just put it in my comments?
Oh, yeah, no, not yet.
Sorry.
So the general consensus from the board was that the South Shore Road is the most important view of this, you know, public view, I should say, of this development.
And this is the HDC that you're speaking about? Okay.
Um, I listened to the meeting and I can tell you who was, if you, Val was there, Carrie Thornwell, Connie, Joe Paul, Ray, Stephen Welch. And did I say, oh, Val, yeah.
Who's Connie, Connie?
Connie, I don't remember.
Oh, she's part of the HDC.
She's an HDC member. And there might be some other people that I am forgetting, but one of the largest concerns was the massing along South Shore Road. They feel that that's the most important public view of the property. It should represent more contextual massing that's appropriate for South Shore Road, single-family houses, et cetera. So that was a big concern. They were also, well, and let me start by saying that they were generally appreciative of the designs of the buildings in terms of the, the massing of the structures and their simplicity. So there weren't a lot of nitpicky issues with each structure, but it was more of a larger context discussion. They thought the repetitive nature of the structures was a concern. They thought more architectural diversity and scale and design would be an improvement to the whole development because there's only two building types, right, and they're just flipped and rotated. So there's a lot of repetitiveness. The fact that all the structures are large and that it The fact that all the structures are large and that it really overwhelms the site. There was a lot of concern about the heights of the buildings. And if we look at, I mean, specifically, and we can pull up one elevation, if you look at the height of the second floor, where the, where the roof starts at the second floor relative to where the window head heights are, there's a lot of space there. And is that some way, are there ways to mitigate the height by playing around with some massing? And generally, the HDC really likes structures to address the street. And there was concern about how these structures actually addressed the streetscape. There, there was a comment that landscaping was going to play a very important role in breaking up the scale of the structures. And so looking at, I think, tree sizes and placement and things like that was going to be an important review. In terms of the materials, no standing seam metal roofs, they should all be asphalt. And there was concern about too much variety in the types of siding because there's some baton board, there's shingles. They didn't want any black fenestration. They think all the trim on the buildings should be painted. They don't want it painted white, but gray. They, a lot of the board members felt that natural trim would just, in a development of this scale with this size structures, would just end up being... I don't know how to say, like, I don't, I always say, like, you know, natural trim buildings kind of look haunted, they're not, they're not really refined looking. And when you have 19 of these buildings, that that would be a concern. So, you know, it was generally, as I said, I think generally, there were things that didn't like, the two cupolas on the community building, they felt that building was over scaled. I mean, you could go to each building and come up with particular things on each building that they might have issue with, but I think the overarching concern was repetitiveness of the design scale along South Shore Road. And, and, and just overwhelming that neighborhood.
Okay. I think those are, those all sound reasonable, I mean...
Yeah, I, I think so. I mean, and I think there, you know, I don't know if we want to look at each individual building as a board and make comments on each individual building. Maybe when we get to the decision-making process, we can do that.
I mean, I, yeah, I think...
We don't need to waste a lot of time on it in terms of, because I think it's an important part of this project, but obviously not when it comes to health and safety, other than the fact of the scale of the project and the scale of the buildings.
Right, I think if we, I think when we address, or if we address the scale of the project, then maybe some of these, these will be addressed in that conversation and that maybe naturally by how that plays out.
Right. Yep. But I, you know, I think if we think about how, well, maybe we don't want to talk about that now, but, you know, having two more remote accesses and the scale of the architecture around South Shore Road, maybe they're not single-family houses, but there's certainly ways of doing things that masquerade as single-family houses, that are multi-unit buildings that aren't the scale of these. And then maybe you could do a different traffic pattern that gave two ways in and out of the development.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we did have before us a proposal from the applicant at one point that was 100 units that were mixed.
I don't remember what the site plan looked like, if there were two ways.
I have it, I could, I don't know if, I don't know if it was two or not, I can look, but, oops. Elisa, did you have a question, or not a comment?
I have a question slash comment that relates to the architectural review, and it has to do with the landscaping, which directly impacts how you, you know, look at the heights of the buildings. And as far as landscaping goes, I see, you know, the lot has been completely clear-cut. So I don't know, they're asking for many waivers, and one of them is to waive protection of natural features to the extent necessary. I don't even know what that means. Natural features like, the, the natural, this is waiver 3.05. So I just, and then with that, there's also a waiver 4.16, waive, asking for a waiver that would require them of any planting of any new trees. So they've asked for permission to not have to protect any natural features, and they're also asking for a waiver that, so that they don't have to plant any new trees. And I don't really understand how that works with the landscape plan that shows trees and with this vast, open space now, how you are going to landscape that and why, why don't you want to be required to plant trees just to save money? I don't get it. How does your landscape plan work with asking for a waiver to not be required to plant new trees? Makes no sense, contradicts itself, is going to look terrible, bad idea, and there's going to be a lot of space that's going to need plantings. I don't get it. And it's going to affect how the architecture is perceived and just the experience when you're walking through this development. That's all.
Well, I think this landscape plan does show some new trees. I was going to ask you, Elisa, when we went to the site viewing, it was raining so much. I don't really remember. But they're showing a bunch of existing vegetation in that center circle where the community building is.
The little island.
Yeah, were those trees still there?
They were there when we walked through, but I understood that they were going to be coming down.
Oh, okay.
Because of the topography, the curbing was down low and the trees were left up high. And I don't, I don't really, I don't really understand what they were doing, but I thought Jamie told us that they were coming out. Maybe his attorney can tell us what's happening there.
But I, I also think this is important now that we know it has an impact on water quality.
Yeah, obviously. So none of it is adding up. I mean, logically speaking, just a macro view of the overall project. Stuff like this, all these contradictions make no sense. And you know what?
Which one are you looking at with those waivers?
It's in Chesia's.
Is that Chesia's report? Wait, what does it say on the front side?
I think he does it.
Exhibit nine waiver list. And then, just a general comment, you know, between the safety issues, the fire situation, the water situation, the runoff situation, I don't see the developer coming up with any compromises. I don't see the developer making any assertions to, to listen to the requests and the concerns and maybe make any changes. All I keep hearing is, this is the way it is, we're not going to change it, and continuing to state why it's not wrong or bad. I'm not hearing the developer say, okay, we're going to take that into consideration. Next meeting, here we are. Here are our list of ideas to address your concerns. That hasn't happened. So you're just sticking with the original plan. Doesn't really matter what we suggest, it feels like, because you're not making any changes to your master plan.
Shall I respond, Madam Chair?
Sure. Well, I mean, you had questions about the waivers, right?
Uh, yeah, you can talk about the waivers.
So as it relates to the waiver, it, it's a request from a waiver of a specific bylaw requirement in order to allow us to plant trees as shown on the plans. So it's not, it's not a request to not have any trees planted anywhere on the site. That, that's not a correct interpretation of that waiver request. What we're doing is looking for the ability to move forward with the plans as submitted. The reason I came up here actually...
So why is there a waiver? Why are you asking for a waiver to waive the requirements of planting of new trees?
I, I would have to go back and look at the specifics as to what is required regarding the planting of new trees, but it's...
What are you avoiding, is what I'm saying.
But, but it's, you know, a pretty standard procedural waiver request to say...
But it is a waiver, so you don't want to do something. So I want to know what you're avoiding doing and what you are going to do instead.
So I, I will go back and take a look at what exactly that specific bylaw provision requires, and we'll provide you that information.
And then I wonder that approach, the approach that I'm talking about, then I'm thinking about that with every waiver. What are you avoiding doing, what are you doing instead? Why don't you want to do it, why are you asking for a waiver?
And so just to clarify, the way the 40B process works, the applicant is not required to justify each and every waiver request. All right, the determination is made as to whether or not the conditions and waiver decisions issued by the board in the aggregate render the project uneconomic. It is not a one-by-one thing. We do not have to justify economically each and every single waiver request. Madam Chair, again, the reason I came up here was actually to let you know that we do have our project architect on the Zoom call, Thomas Zoli, and he is prepared to respond to the architectural comments. So if you could add him, I would appreciate it.
Sure, what's his name again?
Thomas Zoli, I think he had his hand up.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't, I only, my screen only is showing like five people, so...
He's coming over right now.
Okay, and then I just...
Everyone speak into your microphone, please.
Yeah, before Mr. Zoli goes, I just have one more question, or just a follow-up. The exhibit that Elisa's looking at, exhibit nine waivers, those are the, that's the most recent form of waivers that haven't, they haven't changed?
We, I know we submitted with our renewed application. I'll go back and take a look and make sure.
I just want to make sure if we start going through and we have the most, I mean, if you haven't...
I'll double-check, I don't recall which exhibit number is which, so I, I don't know if that's the waiver list or not, but I'll go back and take a look.
But it would, I guess, it doesn't matter what it's called, just like, it would be the most, the one that you submitted, the most recent, the most recent waiver submission would be the one to follow.
Yes, it should be, yes, thank you.
Okay, cool. Okay, so Mr. Zoli, if you want to respond to the concerns that the HDC did, presented to us or shared with us after their review?
Sure. My name's Tom Zoli, I'm with Workshop APD. We had, as I think part of the comments were that they didn't have too many concerns aesthetically about the project. We felt that the scale and the proportion of all of the buildings were actually quite in keeping with predominant architectural scale and size of buildings throughout Nantucket. But, but the more direct corollary there is to a, what, what we feel is a single-family home proportion and scale. We, from a material standpoint, I believe that, and I'm looking at the documents that you guys all have from your website. The roof is planned to be the asphalt shingles in light gray and medium gray. The natural materials, we like, both from a weathering standpoint and sort of that natural coalescing of materials that age in uniform and unison. The, I, I believe that was the bulk of the questions or concerns from the HDC.
Well, there were, there were concerns about massing. As in general, they were appreciative of the massing, but there was concern about the, the heights of the structures, the community building being almost 32 feet tall. And I believe some of the other buildings, I'm trying to pull them up, they keep crashing my iPad.
The renderings might be the, the nicest, the...
Well, no, I want to, I want to look at specific measurements.
Oh, okay.
Because the renderings always look nice.
Do you want me to pull up A1, B1?
Sure. Well, the community building is the first one.
Community building?
Yeah, because that's the one.
I would just note that the community building is not visible from the street.
Well, these will be publicly traveled ways.
Were they, they were primarily concerned from South Shore Road, though I...
No, no, the, the, the comment about from South Shore Road is that the scale of them, of those buildings along South Shore Road is the most important view from, you know, the, the general public. But this will be a publicly traveled set of roadways, so everything within this site will be under HDC jurisdiction.
Understood. I, I was under the impression they were primarily concerned about that South Shore Road view.
No, I mean, that is a specific concern that I just wanted to highlight in addition to some of the other general concerns for the overall project. So if, I mean, I can go specifically, because I do have my notes from listening to the meeting. The community building, you know, Val, global, global comment, all structures are very expansive, appreciates additive massing, but that doesn't necessarily mean that she appreciates exactly the way it's been designed, because there were concerns. She said all buildings are over 30 feet tall. No, we don't need two cupolas on the community building. None of these, this building doesn't have a front door. No standing seam roof, which you mentioned. I have, I'm curious, so are you guys ever anticipating solar on any of these roofs?
From what I understand, it's, it's been discussed, but that's, I, I don't have any further information on...
Because my understanding from the HDC is they don't allow solar on anything but black roofs. So if you're anticipating solar, I think I would change your material. Because they don't want the, the black panels to visually jump off the roof. Let's see, a little, a couple. Let's see, Angus appreciates proportions in general, chimney seems high, no double cupola, no black fenestration, gray tones preferred. The right-hand massing to the community building just seems over, you know, way too long. You know, again, I wasn't, I don't want to get into the specifics of each building, but if you look at the community building, there was some, some talk about, and I don't know if this happens on A1 and B1 as well, there's space above the window heads to the eve. So there was, you know, some discussion of can the building heights come down? Is there ways to play with the sections so that the buildings aren't, this building being one of them, isn't 32 feet tall?
Yeah, we, we did our, our best to minimize heights across all of the buildings. A number of our, our window heads are actually right at the eve on, on a large portion of the project.
Did you get a answer about the height, then? It's just they've already tried to minimize.
Yes, that they've minimized, that's his interpretation.
And the chimney height that was too high is not also on the clubhouse there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Again, I, they didn't, I, I think a lot of these are just sort of general comments.
Yeah.
I think if we want to spend the time, we can go through each building and do that. But, you know, to me, it's more of a global...
Yeah.
Discussion rather than specifics about, you know, this door looks, you know, would be better as a 15 light door. I mean, those are sort of dealing with really minor issues.
Yeah, that sort of gets into the thing about like where the trash cans are. Like it's, I think we have more, like you said, global issues to discuss first, and then...
Although I think we're ready to discuss where the trash cans go.
Stop it. Um, I, I think, why don't, why don't, do we want to, do we want to talk about the clubhouse? Start there?
I mean, that, yeah, I mean, I think it's...
I think it's too big.
It's too big.
I've said it's too big from, since the first time it showed up. I did pull plans for the other clubhouses for different neighborhoods on Island. This is by and large way bigger than anything else. Even the one at Nash Aquisit, which is, you know, really the first floor is offices or whatever, and the rest of it's the old, original house from that, from that original piece of land, whatever it was, before it became Nash Aquisit. I, I just, I think...
I don't know why it's the size it is. I'm just wondering if they have control of what's going to be happening in here that it needs to be.
Yeah, can you pull up the floor plan?
Well, yeah, do we, the, I think there's.
I can only find one plan. There's a big gym, there's a community room, office, there's a lounge.
Bowling alley.
There's a bowling alley in the basement. That was one of the things that, you know, we definitely talked about when we were at our site view, why the building had to be so long. But I can't find the basement plan and the set that.
I have the.
I mean, I think, my feeling is, I, I, this is such a big, it's a big development. Outside space, I think, is more important than a bowling alley in the basement. I think if the building can be smaller and there's more outdoor space for people, like Elisa said, you know, our, our focus, yes, it's the general community of Nantucket, but really, like, the people that are going to be living in this neighborhood year round, which if it is, you know, deed restricted for a majority, there's going to be a lot of people living there all the time. This little bowling alley, it's not going to serve, you know, it's only going to be able to serve a few people at a time. I, I just think having green spaces is way more important.
And maybe parking?
And parking, yeah. I mean, I think the parking is, is going to be problematic no matter what we do, because it's problematic and who was saying last time?
Jody Casper, I think, maybe, the police chief?
The police chief, right, when she was saying how, I think it was her, yeah, who was saying that, you know, one of the unique things about Nantucket is that because of our housing crunch, we do have you know, multi, more than normal would, that would be considered like off-island standard of people living together in the same houses. And so we do have then more vehicles, so that, those kind of circumstances do lend towards more cars than the, than there's going to be spaces. And as she was saying, saying have it, having it spill out, and as someone else brought up, like, whether the cars are, the cars are going to find a place to go, whether there's parking spaces or not. So, anyway.
A space this big usually means there's going to be big events happening.
So our last.
Let's not deny it.
Yeah, so our last comp permit, which I think I have a copy of it, we did condition, I believe, that we said, I think we said no weddings.
No, well, we certainly, I mean, first of all, the building square footage was very small. I don't remember what it was, but it was, I would say, at least a third to a quarter the size of the structure. It was small. And we said no commercial kitchen.
Yeah.
Definitely.
And then would this fall under three tenths a year on this property?
Well, I mean, that's, that's, that's a town bylaw, so it would have to be, I guess, if it's not going to be individual lots and it's one lot, it would be like the HOA would have to apply for that if they were going to do that. Or they have like a, you know, a, their HOA has a, you know, someone would review that and then, then through them apply, I guess, but.
So, but do we have the power to, to say no tents allowed, which would then?
Yeah, well, I don't even, I mean, do they have enough greens?
Where would they put it?
Where would they put it?
So I, I, I think on this one, we have probably a little more say in what we want, because this, I don't think the developer can challenge this directly on, on economic. It's not, they're not making money on this. I mean.
It's just, it's an amenity, so.
So I don't know how they can challenge this on those grounds, and I think we take that into account. That is not something that would be challengeable. I mean, maybe indirectly, but not directly.
But can someone who lives in this community have their child's graduation party here? You know, that's what, and then does the whole high school show up because there's room? I mean, I'm not, I don't mean to be a Debbie Downer, but.
Well, no, I mean, we, we did have big conversations about this, because we were like, so then, okay, so we have these, you only have like, I don't know how many are on this plan now, but
12.
One of them had like 10 or 12, right, parking spaces. And then we're like, so then you do, even if you have your, even if you have your kid's birthday party and you have 25 kids that come.
Right.
Like 25, you know, that's, or, or, or in that instance, where do those people park? How do they, it's not like there's.
And I guess I would just want justification for why this building has to be so big, especially in comparison to what was originally applied for.
If I may, just offer a few comments looking at that plan. We did our best to break down the massing of the building into sort of more smaller size, discrete volumes, and I, I think you can see that pretty well in the renderings. The individual rooms are, are, are not particularly large. Yes, I think in aggregate, you could suggest that the building is larger than it was previously. But we tried to accommodate for the community to create, you know, the ability to have a gathering space of different areas for different gatherings.
What's the square footage of the first floor only?
I believe that should be in the, in the chart. I don't have that number off the top of my head.
It doesn't have to be exact, but roughly.
Well, the right side is 45 by 26, so what's that, 50 by 20, 1,050 by, I'm trying to do the math.
I've got, I've got the basement area as 3,500 square feet total, aggregate area. The level, the, the, the level one area is 3,700 square feet, level two area is 2,600 square feet.
So 3,500 plus 3,700 plus 2,600.
It's about 10,000.
What's going on in this building?
What's 10,000, the entire space.
Are we, like, supposed to not bring it up?
So what we had said when we, when we did our, when we conditioned this before, we said for the recreational building requirements, the board decided to limit it to 1,000 square feet. The maximum interior space we limited to 2,800 square feet, 1,000 on the ground and basement levels, and up to 800 feet more allowed on the second floor for a total of 2,800. And the additional land area resulting from the reduction in the footprint of the recreation building shall be devoted to green space or outdoor passive recreation. We said no commercial kitchen or catering facilities. It's for the exclusive use of residents and guests, no outside rentals, eight parking spaces. That was when there were different lots, so we had limited, we had said the minimum lot square footage had to be 38,196 square feet. And the height and exterior architectural design were subject to final review and approval by the board prior to the issuance of a building permit. Same for the height, height exterior architectural design.
So the original application was for 1,000 feet total?
No, our, what we conditioned it to.
Oh, we can.
I don't remember what the original building looked like.
For 10,000 square feet.
Yeah.
It, I remember at some point it was like either 3,000 or right under 3,000, and then it jumped up again with, when we got.
Maybe the last thing, then when we wrote the decision, we went back to.
Yeah.
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 But we spent a lot of time on it. I do, do remember you did, doing some research about what's in Nasha, what's in other.
Well, just because I wanted to have like, you know, I think the, the one, the one in Nasha, we, there's 190 lots in Nasha.
Right.
That's a lot of families. That's a lot of kids.
So the applicant heard.
There is much smaller and
Inadequate.
And it's adequate and, and.
And the applicant heard that we only wanted, that we were requesting or we were going to limit it to 1,000.
Yeah.
And then they come back with it as 10,000.
Well, they had.
3,000 versus 10,000, 3,000, 1,000 on the ground cover.
Okay.
Madam Chair, can I ask George some clarification of what I, I was thinking, which is, you know, does this, could they single this out on the economic, uneconomic analysis if we were to reduce, or if we were to do something that we thought was more appropriate?
Right.
And that probably couldn't be challenged, right?
Well, they always have the option, if you go back and reread the HAC decision, presiding officer struck a lot regardless of economics. They said it was either beyond your, you know, so they can do that too, so it has to be reasonable. And then you have to justify it, you know, based on local concerns. So it, you know, I don't think you should try to parse it out that way, economic, non-economic, just.
Right, because economically, they'd save money.
You have to, you have to justify it based on valid local concerns.
Well, which is more green space and more parking.
But that's a good point, George, so we should make sure that we are keeping in mind and have a comparison of when we're talking about conditions or that, that we already have what Hack came back and said, these aren't outside of your jurisdiction. We should keep those, or whatever they said, if they struck them.
I'm just giving an example that they don't necessarily do an economic, non-economic analysis for each condition.
Of course.
That they choose to strike. And you, you'll remember Mr. Ed Marchand, when he was here in the first time around, was saying to you, your conditions have to be reasonable, first of all.
Right.
And then they need to be based on local needs. So I wouldn't get caught up in the economics discussion, because again, we all know that usually takes place at the, at the HAC level, so, but this type of analysis is definitely within your purview as you're going through.
And I, and we can.
And, and you'll end up with conditions. I mean, assuming you're not doing a denial, if you're doing a denial, that these issues end up being relevant.
Right, well, we won't know that until we
Right.
get to, but, but for, but for this, just in what you're saying, if, you know, you can't treat the 40B different than other things in the community, but if we're looking at other things in the community, we can say to the, we could say to the developer, hey, other things in the community are like this, so you should be like this.
What I just heard you say earlier, it sounds directly on point to me. You brought up a development and you said how many units it was and how that, that community building compared to this one.
Yeah.
And it's more than adequate at a lower size, so you can certainly, that's definitely relevant and within your purview. And something certainly you can ask the applicant. They can always say, no, we're not going to consider any reduction in the size of it.
And then we can still condition it, and then it's up to Hack to say that reduction was not okay, and we're going to let them do whatever. Or Hack could say they're, they're too big, that you're too little, meet in the middle.
They tend not to do that.
They just say, they don't want to get involved. Okay.
Madam Chair, is there, is there a board that can review this, like a rec board, say, this development?
For what?
Like another town board that can review this, like a park and rec? I don't know.
No, I don't think so.
So we can get a more independent view of it.
I don't think so, but I think, because I think we talked about that before, and I think that's why I ended up pulling the permit, the building files for those other developments to see what their clubhouses were like, because, you know, just for comparison.
And Madam Chair, once, I don't know how it's determined, but it's starting to sound like a commercially used structure, so when, so now we're putting a commercial building in the middle of a residential city. And does this clubhouse of this size turn into commercial use at some point? What would warrant it, or what would turn it into
Well, I think that's.
A commercial use building?
Right, I think that's, well, I mean, that's the question, right, like, what are clubhouses typically used for? What are the typical uses? Like, how, what are the hours of operation? Like, how is this going to be?
Are they paying anyone to use the space?
I mean, the people that live there.
Are the people who use it, do they have to rent the space?
Right, so that'll.
And then is it commercial?
So that would all be determined, I guess, in their HOA docs, which aren't, we aren't seeing, but that's why we can do, and what we did before, we're conditioning to say there's no commercial, no outside rentals, no commercial kitchen, no catering kitchen, or whatever we said.
Can they have a, a neighborhood yard sale? I, I just, I just wonder where it goes over the line of being a residential clubhouse to a commercially used structure.
Well, that would be a determination, that would be an enforcement action, I guess, from the, from the building department, if there were, if there was issues that were going on. But again, we can condition it, Hack could decide against it, but it's not allowed to, it, it is a residential area. It's not allowed to be commercially used anyway, so if there was commercial use, then that would be a violation and that would go to enforcement, so. I.
What they're intending happens in there, maybe they can tell us what they want, what it's intended to use for, no matter what size it is. And then they will be, have to adhere to those uses, or we can adjust it, because we can't name every single possibility of what could happen in these buildings regardless of size.
I sort of feel if we, you know, really restrict the size of it, then it's, it's a non-issue.
Yeah.
There will no, there will only be typical uses. A birthday party with 25 kids that are at the pool, and they have a place to go to the bathroom and get a Coke and have some pizza, but not, which is, I think, appropriate.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like on the level of like a site plan review on this type of issue. So you're, you're the board that has the expertise on local conditions and local customary practices, adequacy of recreational facilities and common buildings and things like that, and you need to look at it. But I certainly would, if you have concerns about it, it would, it would definitely be purview to ask the developer, why do you need it this big? What do you intend to do with it? And then later on, you'll condition it accordingly.
So perhaps, Mr. Haverty, could the developer speak on that? If you don't want to speak on it now, it's okay. I mean, we're done in 10 minutes, so if you want to, maybe next time, speak on the.
Yeah, Madam Chair, we can definitely address the issue next meeting.
But I also want to say, above and beyond these questions and architectural review, and if there is not consumable water, none of this matters, none of it. The architecture, the access, none of it matters if the people who live there are going to be drinking and bathing in contaminated water. And I have a huge issue with that, and it's, I will say it again, it is going to make me deny this project. And the developer hasn't come across with any ideas of how to mitigate this situation.
They could turn this whole center island into a rain garden.
Or some outdoor, all of the, majority of it, outdoor recreation.
Exactly. Would it be okay to ask Billy? I know you pulled some of those things, but I know, what is that development that, Second Avenue, like, they have a community building. Is it possible to pull all those?
Yeah, I mean, they're at the building. I might, I might still have them.
Beach Plum does. I can look and see who does. Second Avenue doesn't have.
I might already have them, Billy, before you.
Does it take a while?
Bert lives in Second Avenue, so I remember.
Oh, yeah, but I thought, where does Tucker Hallam live?
He lives in Second Avenue. That has to do with, it's, it's a different subject. There was, there was Beach Plum with, not on, not on the agenda today, but I can look into the clubhouse.
I think I, I'll, before you spend your time, Billy, like, let me look and see what I have, so you don't have to do the same thing. I can at least, if I already have them, you can go and maybe like update it if you want to, but then you don't have to go back and pull all those files, unless you want to.
Madam Chair, one thing that I would mention is that the development intent here is different than a lot of the other projects that have been developed. Again, my client is proposing to have up to 75% of these units be restricted to year-round residents. That's going to require indoor recreation more so than outdoor recreation. So again, you're not going to have an apples-to-apples comparison compared to unrestricted developments that are going to have a lot of seasonal residents, and therefore not going to have the same need for indoor recreation as this project will.
But, but I have to.
I think that's changed. I think that there's a lot more year-round residents, just from my experience, and I think Nasha Quissette probably is still, I think, a lot seasonal, but I think a lot of the developments have more.
But that might be something that's changed post-COVID, but when they were actually originally developed.
I mean, who, you're going, I guess we could research it if it becomes a, a litigational issue, but. I, I get, I take your point.
Development intent is a little different than the development intent of most of these other projects.
There are a lot of people that live here year-round that find means of exercise that aren't in a community building. They join a gym, they run outside, they ride their bike. I mean, that, that is, to me, that's a very small part of providing housing. I mean, that, that is, to me, that's a very small part of providing housing. Obviously, we want the, you know, residents here to have a good way of life, but I'm not so sure it has to happen with a 10,000 square foot community structure. There's lots of other ways of providing quality of life.
Because that creates additional vehicle trips if they have to leave the development to go do that rather than do it on site, so.
Right.
Okay, well, it's all interesting to talk about. All right, so we have to be done at four. So let's pick up this conversation at our next meeting, which is to be determined.
Yeah, so I wanted to just go over this. I emailed forward with dates. We have six dates to choose from in total.
Okay.
We have February 3rd, 5th, 12th, 14th, 17th, and 19th.
Yes.
January 31st, we don't, we're unable to have full attendance for that, so we're going to, we're going to cancel that meeting. And then the chair and I discussed February 21st is the Friday of.
School vacation.
School vacation. So most, a lot of people could be traveling. I've definitely heard that from a few board members, so we may not want to schedule anything for the 21st.
I'm going to be out of town on the 5th, so.
I floated the 3rd and the 19th. And I mean, I, keep in mind, we have the regular meeting on the 13th because the 12th and 14th are available. I don't know, you all want to do marathons in here, back to back days.
Well, the 19th is good. We should definitely.
Yeah, the 19th.
How many more times do we want to meet?
I mean, I think.
I think we should have one before that.
Well, I think we could, Monday, February 3rd would be good. But then if we don't meet again until the 17th, that only gives us two more, two more meetings. I think if we, maybe.
Susan, the 17th is President's Day.
What?
The 17th.
Oh, I meant the 19th, I meant the 19th.
I'm sorry, yep, sorry.
Yep, because the 7, we originally were talking about the 17th, but that is a holiday.
So if we meet the 3rd and then we would have to meet another day, the week of the 11th or 13th is, and then the 19th. Because that's, those are the only days.
I would prefer, I would prefer, oh, Monday is the, okay, so maybe Friday, the 14th is not a good day because there's no, it's a Friday of a holiday weekend.
Hmm. It's also Valentine's Day.
I'll bring the chocolates.
Worst day of the year.
What was the date that was available that week?
I don't want to get George in trouble.
What did you, what did you say, Billy? The 11th or 12th? 13th?
The 12th.
Oh, we, we have our meeting on the 13th.
We have our meeting on the 13th. We could do the 12th. That is a Wednesday, so the select board will be coming in right after.
I can't do that day. Well, maybe I, I have surgery that day, but I could probably come in after. No, I, I don't think I can do that day. Is there anything else that week? The 11th?
The 5th. Sorry, the 5th.
The 5th, I think, is too close after the 3rd.
It, it, yeah. We're, we're just, we're up against the, the wall here. With dates and there's just so many, we need NCTV, this has to be simulcast. We can't, we can't just have a random meeting.
Well, if everybody else can do the 12th and I can't, I can either, I could mullin' in later. Yeah. No, I mean, like I could miss that meeting and then.
Mullin' in.
And then mullin' in to, to come in on the 19th.
And these are, these would all be at 1:00 PM?
Just so the conversation would continue. I mean, it, I.
Most of these dates involve another, you know, there's another entity that'll be meeting, so.
John, can you do the 12th? Could you run the meeting?
I would prefer not to do the 12th if we could, like, I know, sort of a Tuesday or Thursday would be better. But if that's all we've got, then that's all we've got.
Tuesdays are off limits pretty much because of HDC.
Well, then, okay.
Well, they only start at four. Then we do 1:00 to 2:30?
That's not enough time for it to be worth everybody's while.
I mean, I could set up a meeting at 11. It's, it's up to you all.
Yeah.
There's no magic to one for me.
No.
Yeah, I, I agree with Jim on that.
I'll need to clear that. The very minimum, we could continue to February 3rd. And I'll just need to clear the 11th as a, like a, a morning slash mid-morning start time. 6:00 AM, too early? I'm checking.
So what are we thinking? You're saying like, yeah, you're saying on the 11th, 11?
I can look into 11:00 AM start time on the 11th.
And the Monday.
And what would we go till? 11 to 2?
11 to 3?
Yeah, I can, I can just look into.
Or noon to 3.
I think three hours is.
Yeah, so we could do noon to 3 or 12:30 to 3:30. They don't start until 4, HDC.
The girl, the, the ladies from Plus that run it, they need to get in here at like 3:30 to set up. So I'd like to be out of here by 3:00 PM.
Yeah.
Oh, by 3:00, okay. So noon to 3?
Yeah.
So that would be, and what would the 3rd be? I'm going to have to.
Monday, the 3rd?
Would be a 1:00 PM.
1:00 PM.
Well, if we don't want it, could we do Monday, the 10th?
I didn't have that as an available date from the.
Okay.
Higher, higher powers here.
All right. All right, so maybe, maybe the 11th. I guess just let us know. Maybe double check on the 10th?
Yeah, I can, if we're going to continue to the 3rd, I can check on some of these two, if Tuesday is potentially an option for folks, Monday and Tuesday. Let me just look and see what's, what's available and what times we can potentially get in here. I think it, we might have a chance if it's at like 11:00 AM.
And Monday is going to be 1 to 4?
Correct. Monday, the 3rd is what we're talking, correct?
And then the 13th is our regular meeting. We're going to do that.
Yes, and then we have a fairly full slate that day.
Okay. And that's just till 4?
On the 13th?
Yeah, should we just assume from now on that we just are cut off at 4? That's, that's fine.
I'd have to double check because there's, sometimes with our, our normal Thursday meetings, I think CONCON is right behind us. It's kind of all over right now.
Okay, all right.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Can we?
Yeah, we're going to continue the 3rd. I need to check the 3rd, 11th before I can tell anyone.
Can, can we?
I didn't have clearance on those days and I will be checking the other days.
No, no, we're just going to vote to adjourn.
Madam Chair, I, I have a request.
Yeah.
Hold on, Billy. Can we get someone from the fire department to clarify all these differing views on the amount of water required? I'm confused at some of the numbers thrown out. I'd like to get a summary of what, what we're talking about and maybe him being available to clarify this because he, he did kind of indicate that there's not a lot of issues, but.
Who?
The fire chief.
Yeah.
But then in the bottom, there was a catchall for, the memo from the select board that he brings up these concerns, but kind of generally. So I'm, I'm trying to get an idea. Because we definitely have some differing views.
I don't know, I mean, I, I hear where you guys are coming from. I just, I don't know that, you just want like a, like a, like a, like a table that's showing how much our capacity? I mean, I don't know that.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's, I mean.
Like there are this many buildings with a sprinkler system, this is what we're going to need.
So, I mean, they have to, they have to go to code.
But I don't think there's a code, is there a code requirement on?
Sprinklers?
No, on water supply.
I don't know, but I, but I guess my question is, how are we? I think the generality of it is the health and safety concern. And if we get into the numbers, like there's not a moratorium on building. So like, how are we going to, like I think the, the, the general concern is that there's the, the, the size, the sheer massing creates a threat to the health and safety, is what I'm hearing. And so beyond that, like whether it's 10 gallons or 10 million gallons, for our purposes or at least for mine, the fact that there's enough people from different areas, including the fire chief, saying that, that it's a concern for the health and safety of the community. But I just don't know that they would have, that he would have that information. I'm just looking, I'm sorry.
Someone, I mean.
I'm just looking at my notes because I had, like for my notes from last week, the fire chief, the fire chief, I had listed, I didn't have any deliverables from him that we were waiting on, that he had preferences, but he did not find specific code violations. But the conditions that he hoped to see were, you know, detail on the final plan of fire hydrants and signage so that emergency vehicle, people could get in and out. The emergency exit, maintenance and upkeep for public safety must comply with the state and local fire codes and engineered sprinkler plans approved. So I think those are the things that we can look at for conditioning.
Well, I realize that a lot of this is a state fire code and either you comply or you don't comply, it's beyond us. And I realize a lot of things fall into that, but now that we've heard some more testimony about whether there's enough water to, in the event of a, of a catastrophic fire, I'd like to clarify because I, numbers were thrown around.
Yeah.
And, and we didn't get to ask the fire chief that. Now, I, I would have liked to, now that I know some other information. So that's why, if anything, if he could just address it.
What do you, so you think, Billy, do you think the fire chief would have that information? Or would it be more the water department?
I have no idea. I mean, you know, my recollection from the last meeting was Mark Willett said they have enough water.
Right. And I just fear that this falls within two.
And again, the fire chief was saying, like you said, preferences, but he felt they met the code. So I mean, I, best I can do is reach out and ask.
Yeah, I just.
My concern is that it's, it doesn't get addressed by, there, it's looked at separately by two different bodies and maybe they missed this part.
I mean, we can certain, like Billy said, we can certainly ask. I.
I would like clarification.
Yeah, okay. I don't know that we're going to get the clarification that you want, but it's worth asking.
I heard some talk about also getting some maintenance information. Wasn't he going to have a meeting?
That was for the, that was for the, the.
David Gray.
Stormwater.
Yeah.
Department that's new.
I thought they were going to meet.
They are, and that I think is how, they, that's happening offline. I think that we're going to, we haven't gotten anything back yet about that, but yeah, I had that as well.
I can confirm that, that's correct.
Yeah.
We're waiting on a response.
Okay, so we're five minutes over, so we're motion to continue.